Welcome, everybody. Let's call the meeting to order. Welcome to the March 13th Select Board Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and everything for all.
Do we have any citizen statements and petitions? Anybody like to be heard? All right, hearing none. I don't believe we have any correspondences come in within the last week. Let's talk about item four, review, consider key fob policy.
I did update it based upon a recommendation from Jason. I'm still working on it if anybody else wants to take a look at it. That's the revised and final version. I think I sent that out. And basically, the system is operational. We have actually issued several pieces of fobs to make sure it's working properly before we start the distribution. Dan has put together a list. Dan has been the person behind all of this. He's done a great job in terms of coordinating everything, getting it done. So within the next week or so, we're actually going to be distributing the fobs so the people would be getting fobs. And the policy will define how those fobs are used, when they should be used in terms of, you know, granting access on those off times when somebody needs to actually get into the building. I can bring it back next week. If everybody just wants to read it this week, we'll bring it back next week when we vote on it.
Sure. For anybody who's wondering, if you notice that at the buildings, there's a, you know, there's a scanner on the door. And it was originally, I think, the previous fire chief that suggested that rather than having all these keys floated out there that everybody has to return. The key fobs are inexpensive. We can turn them on and off so people who need access can get access. And we just had put together a policy that will, everybody will review, will revisit it. Sure.
We have a form, but we're going to be actually issuing, logging the person and give every fob as a number on it. But we know who has fobs and we're also talking about potentially rekeying all the downstairs and upstairs stores to the offices.
Instead of just trying to collect everything?
Yeah.
That's a safe.
Just sort of a changeover, complete changeover.
Well, do you know if the doors will record if they were opened with a key?
Actually, whoever, if I come up on a Friday afternoon and want to get in the building and have a fob, it logs me in as that's my key, says Dave Dematris in the building.
But what if he's a physical key? Will the door record?
It works for now, but in the future will not work.
All right. Number five ballot question. This specifically related to a ballot question in connection with one of the Warren articles concerning converting the, the three elected assessors to appointed assessors. And that was suggested by the Division of Local Services when the Department of Revenue did their review last year. And I've had some discussion with the Chair of the Assessor. I don't think he's here or online. But that's something we're not ready to deal with this year yet. So we're just going to pass that over and probably deal with it either at a special town meeting in the fall or next year, or perhaps never, depending on how the state legislature rolls out some of the different laws and things. So that's, so that's number five. And number six, hours for building maintenance. Have you received anything from Ann and the Town Hall Union about that?
I have not to date, but he and I did have a discussion about it. He said that he is going to get that letter for the board to clarify that.
All right. Well, that's great. So those of you who are here to present your budgets and we think you're going to have to sit through all of this other business before we get to it. We're already at the budget. So.
Sorry.
Sure.
Question on the building maintenance hours. We need, I mean, we're talking a couple hours. So it's like we said last week.
He has three that have already been allocated for Town Hall when Jim was here. It's an additional two hours.
The issue, the issue was not the two hours. It was discussions with council.
Right. My question is, are we being too specific about building maintenance or increasing hours?
Because.
We identified a whole series of tasks that need to be addressed in Town Hall. And it's sort of like a facilities kind of thing, right? Not being a facilities manager per se, but there's a lot of little things that need to be done, like getting the key for the elevator over there. Following up on capping the well, which is part of the studios' water on the waterboard. He helped with the fobs. He's been coordinating that whole thing.
Yeah, my thing, I didn't know if there's a way to look. I mean, he's allocated 30 to parks.
Five to the water.
Is there a 30-10 split where the 10 is more grouped? Because my point is, if we're very specific, can he go over, based on union, can he go over two hours on building maintenance? Or can you give him more flexibility to allocate his time to where he's in these functions more holistically? Well, that's the issue, right? The discussion was, the term was used to me, the formal term was direct dealing. Meaning that all of the hours and everything that he does, is it all contained within, you know, anything covered by collective bargaining? And the short answer is, it isn't. So if it was all that way, then it wouldn't be an issue. So all I needed was, I was suggested, Strong suggested that we get a letter, not even specific to hours, but specific to tasks. And he, and I, and it was. I'm okay with task, but the allocation of time to a task could be a tracking. Is he, is he, is he, is it hard cut off or not? So it's more the allocation of time to task. More is saying, you've got, your 40-hour employee, here are your tasks. Well, my understanding.
Yeah, we're not going to go beyond that.
And my understanding is, that's, that's our side as management. Right now, it's just a letter from, from the labor side saying that they're aware of it and it's not direct dealing. So that's really the next.
Because they're allowing us to go forward.
Well, that's, that's what the lawyers want to do. So he said he's going to get it locked in. Exactly. All right. Let's move up to budget presentations. Jody, if you want to grab a seat up here anywhere you want. And let's start with, why don't we start with the town clerk if you want? Probably be the quickest. Can you, do you want to pull it up on the, on the screen, Jason?
Does the town clerk have their own separate?
61, 162.
And it's, it's not in FY25 folder?
Is it the FY25 budget request?
Yep.
All right. So that you should open that spreadsheet. Looks like.
To the top. You got it?
I got it.
I'm going to zoom in on it for you.
Thank you.
Are you right on the top, hopefully? There you are. You see that? I don't know why the floaty thing won't go. A little better?
Yep. So for the town clerk's line items, the big ask is for a 5% increase in salary this year. Instead of what is traditional is whatever is voted for the Town Hall employees or the employees in general. That's what's also given to the clerk, but it's not in writing everywhere, anywhere. I feel like this is my only opportunity to advance myself because I don't have a contract. I don't have a union that fights for me. So I think this is the process that I need to use to ask for something a little bit more than is standard for the town clerk's line item. Just basically, the cost of living is a lot higher in the last three years and 2% is not really cutting it. I feel my value is higher. So I'm requesting a 5% instead of what is normally given to the clerk's line item. Questions on that?
No, she's an elected official.
Okay.
So the reality is that as an elected official, someone can make a motion on the floor at town meeting and change anything they want. Although if you look at our articles, you'll see that Article One requires that any change that anybody make to an article has to keep us as a balanced budget. And the issue is, Ellen, you're right. Normally, we, we give the elected officials like yourself the same, whatever it is, all of the contracted employees. Right now, it's, it's, it's being budgeted at two and a half percent. And I'm gonna, you know, we're not going to vote on this right now.
Of course.
But, you know, the plan is, I think the recommendation is probably going to be two and a half percent like everybody else. But I would suggest, I know, just like frankly, we ask an awful lot of all of the town employees. I know that everybody who walks in here sees what a great job you do and how hard you work. But again, it's, it's just a matter of equity. But I appreciate your request and I hear what you're saying.
No, understood. And I am the last man standing as far as elected employees. I'm the last one.
So I have a question, I guess, which is, you know, at some point, Menden will have a new town clerk, presumably at some point.
Yes.
So, so I don't know where the salary is set for the position of town clerk and how this increase will affect that for.
Well, it's always my belief that you should pay the fair wage. You shouldn't knock it down for an incoming clerk too far.
Right.
It should be within it, but we don't really have salary skills right now.
It's not certified the same way.
Exactly. And I think it was in that study that was done a long time ago, but that's kind of not being used anymore. Yeah.
Yeah, it isn't because it's an elected.
Right.
Position. It's really up to the board to set it and the townspeople can ultimately, and they have been times frankly, when the townspeople have changed it and made it, made it work. Other times they tried and it hasn't. But.
Pretty daunting.
What's that?
That process is pretty daunting, getting in front of town meeting.
And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting, I think we'd like to resolve it fairly before it. And I think you're doing the right thing by asking. I guess what I would ask is, is an opportunity, there's, there's obviously, I know there's a lot of training that you do and things you do to roll it out to everybody else. But what, in the last year, if I can ask, some, some of the, some of the special trainings you've gone to that at your own time and expense that have enhanced your job because you certainly do a great job.
Well, I do go to three conferences a year and sometimes four if I go to the New England Conference. And we, we are trained on open meeting law, all the updated laws that come through. So open meeting law, mostly, it's mostly election stuff. The election laws have changed quite a bit since really 2020, 2022 is the way they finalized a lot. So a lot of training goes to that. I've taken probably 12 online courses to get my international certification, which I received last fall. And those online classes were anywhere from managing difficult people to budgeting and all different types of projects, subjects that you would hit upon that aren't necessarily town clerk related, but they are municipal and managing people and dealing with people. So. And that continues. Every year I go to these seminars and I keep up with the current laws. And we sometimes have guest speakers at our, our local meetings too, the Worcester County meetings. And the, I'm also on the E-board for the Worcester County, I mean, sorry, we're E-board for the Massachusetts. I'm the Vice President of the Worcester County.
Do you get elected to that?
I do.
So does that mean next year you'll be the president?
It's not on my radar. No, I'm happy to leave that to the town of Milbury.
What year you were elected?
2018. So this will be six years coming up. So that was my biggest ask. You'll notice I broke out. And last year, the town administrator had grouped together my postage printing and supplies into one group called Supplies. I really prefer to have the postage broken out. It's, it's a good statistic that I use to weigh whether sending out reminder notices for dogs is worth it. I know I can, it's just easier for me to see it broken out and I prefer it be broken out. So that's why some of those numbers look like they're going up and down, but they really aren't. I did go up 400 on so meetings and dues. Most of the dues have gone up slightly, but the hotels and the mileage, those, those things have gone up. And I want to be able to go to the MMA every year. So, and that itself costs all over $200. So that's what that increase is there for that line item. That's about it for town clerk one.
See, it shows, it looks like you dropped the supply. Is that because you broke it out?
I broke it out. Yeah. I'd prefer it this way. I don't, I haven't really talked to accounting. I thought you were okay with it, right?
Yeah. So one of the things that we'll keep in the spirit of is all the work that we did around the chart of accounts before we converted to Springbrook. So while there, there are definitely has been feedback from multiple departments, not just the town clerk, to segregate some of the, the accounting practices into separate line items as they were before. So we will look at that closely and make sure that we're consistent across the board. But then also, if we decide, okay, you know what, this, this doesn't fall in line with what we want to keep, you know, in a simplistic, simplistic view of our chart of accounts. But oh, by the way, here's some reporting capabilities that you can run to be able to get down to the level of detail that you'd like without having a separate line item. So those are things that we can do to train the staff after the fact, once we kind of make these decisions and then say, okay, you know, we didn't split your line item out. But here's how we can run a report to get you with that data. So that's a solution. Also, we just haven't, we haven't gotten there yet, but as soon as we do, that'll be a consideration.
Perfect.
So just for, just for everybody's information, when, when people come into the town clerk's office and they, they pay the various fees that it costs, do most or all of those go right to the town?
Yes, they all go to the town. The only fee I get, it's not really a fee. The only thing I get to keep is if I perform a wedding myself, I keep that money.
So if you, if you marry somebody, if you, if you officiated the wedding, the town doesn't get, doesn't get.
No, you get the $25 that they do to apply for it and I get the fee for being a JP.
Anybody have any, any other questions? Elections?
Now, elections, you know, is, goes up and down every year based on how many elections we have. And of course, this is the up year, presidential year. We're going to have a primary in September, the general election in November, the town election in next May, and also two town meetings and early voting for both state elections. So as you can see, that it's gone up like 52%, but that's not unusual. The biggest, biggest rises in contracted services, that includes poll worker pay, the officers at the polls. For instance, I, at this last election, paid out. Right, but there's actually more than that. The number was like $3,300 just in salaries to run the presidential primary. One week of early voting, which you have to man. And then the police officers and generally, they, I mean, it was an average of $80, $87 an hour for that. So, so it adds up. And for the state primary, I mean, sorry, for the general election, it will be two weeks of early voting. State primary, I believe, is still only going to be one week. On top of that, there is, as you know, vote by mail is automatic. Now, if you request it for every election, including our town election. So when you get that postcard in just January this year, anyone who checked off all elections is going to get a ballot for the town election. To put that in perspective, last year, because we didn't have automatic postcards coming, 47 people applied for a ballot, early ballot for the town election. I currently have 852 ballots to send out for the town election this year.
So just so I understand, when, when somebody makes a request to the Secretary of the Commonwealth's website for early voting or for mail-in ballots, the responsibility to mail those ballots out and process it falls to your office?
That's correct. So that we, if they check all, all elections, they're on the list for every election, including the town. The state pays for the ballots to come back to us. So there's postage page envelopes that they get, but to mail them out, it's on the town. We do get reimbursed some of that postage through the auditor's office. They'll, they will reimburse us. But they use our numbers to reimburse. So it doesn't take into account somebody that had to be sent out a second one because they made a mistake on the first one and we had to send them another one. But it's expensive. It's, it's almost a dollar per envelope.
Besides posters, does the state provide any funding to the town to, to run the elections? So that if there's a year where there's a presidential election, a presidential primary, you know, a more heavily populated election or the, or the, some of the two-year elections, you know? Do we get compensated for any of that? Or do we get reimbursed for any of that when you have to put extra time in for those years?
I, my time and Peg's time does not get reimbursed because it's supposed to be our regular jobs, even if we go beyond.
So you're, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your hours, your required hours go up and down year to year.
Correct.
So when it's a busy year like this year, you've got a lot more time you're going to have to put in personally for that reason.
Yeah, it was, you know, Saturdays, Sundays. But to answer the original question, three hours of any state election. And I believe this year they might actually be doing the local election too. Because they mandated polling hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, those first three hours now get reimbursed for setup, for anything, any costs associated with those first three hours. So we fill out a survey and then Jody sees the deposits that go into a special revenue account.
So those monies are sent to the town after?
Correct.
And that would end up going into, rolled out of free cash?
No, no, it goes into a special election account. And so that, that's the answer. They, they don't reimburse us for anything else. We try to get reimbursed for unfunded mandates.
Right.
Which that was because towns were not opening at 7:00 AM for elections prior to that.
I mean, is it fair to say that under the elections section, there's nothing that's optional in terms of these increases?
Well, feeding my poll workers, that might be a little optional, but I don't consider that optional.
What I'm saying is, you, this is a great explanation, but I'm not hearing anything that's really a decision.
It's a budget driver. It really is. Yeah. And this is the first, or it's maybe the second year, that, that the poll workers get paid minimum wage and the wardens get paid an extra dollar. And we're tapped out now. We're at the top of minimum wage. So it should stay stable for a little bit, but the police officer's salaries just, will just keep going. I mean, you can use constables, but I prefer to have the police officers.
So for FY25, there are a lot of elections, but is the expectation that the budget will then go back down? You said it fluctuates.
That's right. Next year, when I sit here.
Somewhere a little probably higher than the FY24, based on, you know.
Based on salaries, if there's more mandates, if vote by mail is more popular. I am going to use this year's town election as a beta because this is the first time that they were sent postcards. Well, next year, I'm not going to send postcards in January. Neither is the state because there's no state elections. And if, if out of these 852 that I have right now and I only get a 10% return, I will come to you and recommend that we do not offer vote by mail for the town election. And you, that is a decision that you guys have to vote on, but I can come and ask for that. Well, it's actually.
I'm going to make a recommendation.
Yeah, the board of registrars has to vote on it. And then if it, if I get a decent turnout, that means to me people want it and we'll keep it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
How about, how about the tree warden? Yeah. All right, go on up, man. You got all the information.
It's under Forestry?
Yes.
Yeah. There we go. So here you are. This is your section where, first line. Salaries and wages.
All right. So it's looking like first salaries and wages has been increased from 3,500 to 5,000, but then tree cutting for conservation has been decreased by the same amount. Yeah, we're looking to, well, Jody and I have discussed it. We're looking to simplify the, the budget. There was money available to me for fuel, which we talked about it.
There was money available to me for fuel, which, we talked about it, and decided it's too convoluted to, to try to keep track of every mile when I go out to look at a tree or respond to this or that. So I'm looking for an increase to account for the fuel and for the additional time that, that the, the job requires.
Well, this is showing me here that it actually is zeroed out. So there is no, I mean, moving around to different buckets, but at the end of the day, it still was twenty-nine, seven fifty. Last year's twenty-nine, seven fifty recommended for this year. So is that what you intended?
Is it what we intended? I think so.
Condensing tree cutting?
Yeah, that we had a lot of categories that were kind of not necessary. All of our tree work is contracted. We don't have a tree department, so I am the tree department. But I am primarily the contractor for the town. So I interface with highway, police, and our contractor. So to be fair and to do my due diligence, I did reach out to two other primary tree services in the area that can offer the same services, the one we've been getting. And the prices were half again to almost twice as much money, so we're getting a great deal with Bob Garrigan. But I did reach out to Tree Tech out of Foxborough and Stumpy's, and both of which I've had a lot of experience with, because I know they're top-notch. But their prices were crazy, and I'm very happy with the work that Garrigan's been doing for us. So as far as I'm concerned, it's his contract to lose. Aside from that. Yeah.
Alright, so basically you're not asking for an increase?
Well, I'm asking for a personal increase.
Or if you look at fifty. Do you look at the tree cutting line?
Yep.
That really is the driver for the budget increase of eleven percent. And you can speak to that a little bit with regards to contracted costs going up.
Thirty-three to forty-eight, nine fifty.
So, our contract, our, our preferred contractor, who is Bob Garrigan, did raise his rates about ten percent. So that should be reflected in these numbers.
Does this reflect level service?
I had a discussion at one point in the budget hearing about the need at certain points, like fifty percent of the time, you would be using a crane and have a three-mane crew versus a two-mane crew.
But three versus four, right.
And that was impacting the cost as well.
So I guess we talked about this a year ago, to understand, so I understand costs go up. What, what I'm never quite sure of is, what's the plan with the, the, the cutting allocation? So you have a targeted area you're gonna look to focus on, knowing that, so we need to spend fifty thousand dollars? Or is this to have in case we need to spend fifty?
Basically, yeah.
Basically the latter?
We're putting out fires. We are addressing dead trees, which are hazards along the roadways. And if they, if we have trees to address at the schools or around the police station, or wherever town property, we, we've done work at the park. We haven't yet gotten to the point where we can start going street by street and pruning dead limbs over the road, bad crotches, bad hazard situations. We're not quite there yet. We're still dealing with emerald ash. Still have a lot of ash trees, a lot of dead ash trees within six, eight feet of the street. But we're, we're, we're getting on top of it. And you've seen, if you've been driving around town, you've seen crews, and you know that the trees are going away, but we're still, things are still breaking. That wind we had a couple days ago, we had, I don't know how many times I've had crews on my street, on Blackstone Street, and we had an ash tree shear, and now it's resting. So, I mean, every time the wind blows.
Well, do we have an idea of, of what the, the volume of ash trees we have in town that are potentially at risk?
They're still dying. It's a fluid situation. Do we have, do I have a number for you?
No, an idea, right? And do, so my, my point would be this, because we talked about this a year ago, before we increased your budget, was to say, I understand we're catching up and understanding it, but at some point, we have to get a sense of what the potential is, right? Because kind of like highway, highway, we're looking to actually provide extra funding to highway, and now that we understand what the road conditions are, we can focus. So it's sort of the same, I have the same thought in my mind, is do we know within the town where our areas focus need to be? Granted, there'll always be emergencies, right? Saying this is the type of project-level funding that we could fund as needed. So do we need to do a full-year assessment?
No, I'm just thinking about if, if, we see through thirty-three thousand dollars. I'd like to be able to explain or see from the town's perspective, thirty-three thousand dollars in this budget is going to get you X. Not perfect precision, but an idea, we, we think we need to do work in this space, this space, and this space in the town, and we think it's gonna cost us about forty-eight thousand dollars due to the increase in costs, right? Or we could go down the path of, as if we're totally reactive, then we need to make, need to fund your account such that you can react. And that might be incremental throughout the year. So you might think about funding FinCon reserves, as an example, with a larger dollar amount to be allocated as needed, as opposed to putting a large buck-dollar amount in here that's not being used until it's needed. Does that make sense?
I agree.
I'm just, you know, so we kind of had a similar conversation a year ago. I'm kind of trying to get in front of it in terms of.
But Ted, the, the, the point is, this, this figure, this fifty-four, six fifty, which is, which represents eleven-point-three percent increase, that to, to Jody's terms is, is this is level, level service funding, and this is what is required for you to put out fires and do what you need to do to keep all of the trees off of the roads and the ones that are hazardous, to cut them down.
Okay, yes.
Is that?
Yes.
I'm not hearing that. I mean, I understand what you just said, but I'm not exactly hearing that. I'm saying, could thirty-three thousand do that, do that for you, understanding you could do less, because costs have gone up? You know what I mean? So I, I just sort of, I'm not.
The answer's yes.
Yes.
But the numbers in here represent level service, so do I have the same, the same.
We have, we have a hole we've got to close with level service, right, from a budget standpoint?
Yep.
So I'm just, when I see an increase, I'm just looking at an opportunity.
Yep. There, yeah.
Or a different way of funding something that is a static number for twelve months.
So you're not suggesting that
Right.
that the funds don't go to forestry or the tree, you know, at, at some point, but just not necessarily budgeted in the same way. But maybe something more requests later on.
Emergencies and down the place.
I guess the question for the current, for the current year, with, with, apparently the current year, forty-nine thousand one hundred, where are you at right now with that total budget? How much do you have left at this point in, in March?
That's a question that I, I've been, I'm not sure about. But we're gonna be getting close.
Because I think
We're getting.
An answer to that is if, obviously, if, you know, if we're, if we're dealing with the emergencies, and we're getting to the end of the year, and we haven't spent it all, well, then that means that we had a year with less issues, right? Because we didn't have to put out as many fires to use your.
Well, there's, there's other factors involved. Our ability to secure our contractor, because he's not just at, at our, at Beck and Paul. He also services Uxbridge, and he's also services private clientele. So I have to, I have to kind of lean into him, to get him for a day or two here and there. And then I've got to prioritize the trees in town that need to be taken down first, and it's a judgment call, it's all judgment calls. And I'll never get them all down for fifty grand or a hundred grand. So you're asking me, what can thirty-three do it? No. Couple hundred thousand would get us all cleaned up, but I, I couldn't get a contractor in here to do it if I want, had the money. You're right, that's not the question. The question is, what does the town, what does the landscape look like? You, my questions might need to increase.
Way out beyond our budget. We don't, fifty grand won't touch what we have, well.
That's an answer I got last year. That's not an answer. I'll say that again.
Mike, if you want, asking me to give you a number of trees, and how many hours, and how many, how much it's gonna cost?
That's all I'm asking for. What are we gonna do with fifty grand, you know? That's all.
I drive up and down the town roads, and I look at the trees, and I, I assess the trees, and the, and the trees that are hazardous, I stop and I get out, and I have a harder look, and I look at the base, I look at the trunk, I look at the lean, I look for cracks and stress cracks and lightning cracks and everything else. And then I make a judgment call, and I say, okay, this one's gotta come, and this is, makes the top of the list. And I have those trees all over town.
Yep.
And I, then I meet with Bob, and I say, here's the ones I want to do first, and I, we outline a day, or two, or three, or whatever he can give me.
So you have a plan?
Oh, I have a plan, but the plan is very fluid, and it changes every time the wind blows.
So it, so your plan would be, Mike, there's, there's a hundred trees we've already identified that are at risk.
Sure.
If you give me that budget, I can get probably thirty, thirty of those hundred down. Which ones don't, I don't know which ones, but I could do thirty with that much money. That would lead me to say, we might need to fund, give you a bigger budget, but right now, I'm flying blind. That's why I'm asking the question. So it's not a, it sounds like you have a plan, maybe share it, you know, just say, hey, this is the landscape.
Well, I do have a plan. Take down all the hazardous trees that it, that are within ten feet of the roadways. Here's my plan. Do we have enough money to do it? Do we have a couple, two or three hundred thousand dollars to do it? And do what, can I get a contractor in here, full-time? I can't. That's the thing. So when I say I'm putting out fires, what I mean is, we're doing the best we can with the money we have, and the, and, and the contractors who are available to give us their time on a.
But you understand, I'm trying to give you more money.
Well, I appreciate that. I think the money is adequate. I do, and I think we will get there. I don't think it's gonna happen in a year. But, but it's better now than it was last year, and I will tell you this, trees are still dying. So we're gonna have this conversation next year, and, and there's gonna be new trees, and there's gonna be different situations. And there's gonna be things that had to be addressed between now and then, that I can't foresee right now, because and I've been doing this for forty years, and I'll tell you what. We get storms and things happen, and I, and I still get blindsided.
Like point in time, like right now, knowing what you know, it sounds like you know where you want to focus with the budget you're asking for.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have.
I'm just asking you to share that, because it's not really being expressed, it's just.
If I gave you streets with trees, at, at what poll numbers and so on, would that help you?
Well, it might actually help from the taxpayer.
Well, we, you know, we'd be.
We're addressing, just like the roads.
I mean.
Gonna deal with.
I think, if you had a, if you had a, an idea, and you had it written down someplace about where you knew there were issues, like I, I remember we spoke last year, I think, in Quissette Road, there was a bunch of dead trees that, that, and actually, you, you were, you were really resourceful getting mass electric, or national. They saved us about a hundred thousand dollars. Exactly. So the question is, are there any other, other, what, what Mike, I think he's asking is, any other trouble spots like that? Nothing like that in town.
Okay, but there must be.
Sporadic. We had, Millville Road still has a lot of dead ash trees, and, and we've taken down dozens, but this, this more. And I'm still, I'm, I get calls from John Dudley on a regular basis, asking me about this tree and that one. And then I gotta go out and look at it and, and put it somewhere in the priority list. So I have a priority list, and, and that changes all the time. Okay, this one's, this one's more important, and now that's gonna, and that's in the next day of, that I can get, get Bob in here. And I try to get him for a day or two every month, give or take, and sometimes more often, but when he's, when he's got his crane, it's four grand for the day.
Four minutes. So the reality here is, up or down with your budget, you can either get more done, or you'll get less done. But you know where you want to start, and that priority might shift.
Right.
But we're not gonna get it all done. And the question is, how much money can we allocate to get some of it done?
Based on how often I can get a contractor in here, fifty is not a bad number to be working with. Because if, if you said, well, we can get, we can get you seventy-five K to, to get more done, I'd be pressed to get a contractor in here. I'd have to reach out to other people, and then, and then the prices go way up. So if I saw, had a situation where I thought, okay, the townspeople are really at risk, because things are gonna fall, and people are gonna start dying, we'd have a conversation with that effect. I'd be coming for more money. That's, but that's not the situation. We're on top of that. We're, we're still dealing with situations and getting the worst trees down first, and that's just the way I approach it. But every street in this town has tree issues. There's, I mean, I'm saying that off the top of my head, but there might be a few that are pretty clean, but for the most part.
Yeah, I hear it.
And you see them, you drive around.
So absent of any bills that are outstanding right now, that we haven't got, Ted is right on target with expenditures at about seventy percent expended, so we have about thirty percent remaining in his budget, and I mean, that's great, it's on target.
Yeah, that's, so I hope to get him in here for another handful of days between now and June.
Okay.
Does, does forestry have, is it included in the annual report? Is there any sort of summary of, I don't know, how much, like, I don't know, which, which trees?
Did I get, did you, Laura would.
I mean, I, I think it would be of interest to the voters to see, like a.
I did submit a comment report, and I did, street by street, and the type of trees that came down, and, and the money spent on each road, and yeah.
I think that would be.
That, right, Laura?
Yeah.
So the short answer is.
Would be interested in that.
Yeah, you can read, you can read all the boring details.
You have the date, location, work done, cost, and the vendor's name on your report.
It's all in there.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
Unless there's anything else you want to talk about?
No, I, I love trees.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Let's thank you.
Yes. I apologize, Ted. Well, you're, you're certainly welcome to, to come, to come next. I'm sorry about that. If you'd like, we can, we can bump this, because clearly you can't do this and that, right?
Self-explanatory, I mean.
Alright.
Make an attempt, but.
Well, you know what?
Try to be respectful.
But I appreciate the heads up. Alan, we'll, we'll, we'll go through it, and if we have questions, I will, as you and I have done many times, I will give you a call, and, and we'll set time in the budget to go over specifics. We'll set time at another meeting. You know, the other, the other option, if, if you'd like to, if you have someone would like to give us a Reader's Digest condensed version in, in, in five or ten minutes and just run through the high points? I, well, I was, I'm, I'm glad you said it, because I was gonna ask that, because he does. Alright, why don't you come on up and do that? That's great. Thanks. Okay, is that, do we have that online somewhere, or is that?
I can email it.
Alright, great.
And if you put that in the shared, right?
I gave you, I don't know.
Yeah, it's in the shared.
Well, welcome.
I guess the first question I have before we, are there any, are there any big changes or just the changes in the process, or anything in particular that you want us to be aware of?
Alright, so the only changes really that are gonna be a major change is the salaries and wages. We can decrease the salary wages by twenty-nine thousand dollars. But as you will notice, for current contract services, we'll decrease that budget by ten thousand to one thousand. So that gives us nine thousand dollars to play with. An engineering case was at twenty thousand dollars last year. We have our own lobbying account that pays for those engineering fees, so that twenty thousand dollars is also to play with. Last year, it was me, Kim Newman, who was the administrator, both gentlemen, in April, we figured out to reallocate those funds to give that budget lighter to salaries, but I'll be on board. So basically, it's kind of like a wash.
A wash.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next increase is for a testing of a lake and landfill. The major increase is for a landfill alone. We have a third card inspection at the pointy, which is a third card inspector that will complete and prepare a third card inspection report and submit to the Mass DEP, that's twelve hundred dollars. We are going for a permit modification request, and we'll request the reduction of frequency of parameters for the collection of groundwater samples and mass migrations, meaning that's three thousand dollars. This is all, who does all our DEP inspections of the old landfill. Access agreement, we are becoming in contact with town council. She believes that she can do it much cheaper than what Atlas is proposing. But I left that budget line underneath here. That's an access agreement between the town amendment and the current property owner of the landfill for collecting groundwater and soil gas samples at fifteen hundred. And maintenance expenditures by the town amendment or maintenance and upkeep of the landfill area, including repairs to wells, catch basins, and filling and leveling the various seapools. That's seventy-five thousand.
That additional money, that's seventy-five.
Uh, that additional money, that's seventy-five hundred dollars has to do with, uh, the DEP's restrictions and, uh, updates that town unfortunately, even though we don't own the land, we are legally obligated to, uh.
This is the. Bellham Street?
Yes. So that currently there's a, uh, catch basin that needs to be rebuilt. Uh, the tree department, uh, the highway department just helped us with a tree that had fallen and actually landed on one of the test wells and bent it. Uh, so the highway department was great, but we can't always depend upon them. So we have to have some funding in case we have to hire an outside contract. We have some depressions that have to be filled next.
So the next line in the, we just said for the municipal expenses was adding in the municipal side of traction, recycling, flexion for the town services. Uh, we've got as all municipalities like the highway department, the library, the senior center, uh, that's eighteen thousand seven hundred. And the subscriber traction second program for the subscribers alone, that's an increase of eight thousand dollars. So from the overall border health budget from fiscal year twenty-four, it went from seven sixty-eight to nine hundred. And for this year, we are proposing eight hundred, two thousand, eight hundred for a difference of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred, which is five percent increase overall. That's my.
And again, as far as trash is concerned, on the subscriber side, it's all paid for by the subscribers. That's not money that the taxpayer base has to come up with.
And just to, to revisit a discussion that we had before about, you know, ratepayers and a trash bill versus just, you know, making everybody in town, you know, roll it into everybody. Is it, is still true that the, the trucks that are on the road would be able to pick up all the trash to everybody in town without adding extra trucks on the route?
Uh, I would have to ask E L Javi that question. Right now I thought there were maybe about four hundred residences that aren't being picked up on part of the subscriber base. Um, so I don't know where that would.
I, well, my memory was that when, when he was in there, said he was, he would, they were going on the same roads anyways. Cause all of the houses anyways, and it was only going to be a, you know, a, a delta in tonnage. And not, not extra trips or extra trucking costs.
Because we're fortunate, it's been a long time since we've got a call that the truck packed out before it finished its route. Uh, I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that people are being, you know, as time goes on, a little more conscious about what they're throwing in the trash. Uh, the total program, uh, definitely keeps that under control. Uh, usually if the truck in the past, the rare occasion that it did pack out, he just picks the route up where he left off early the next day and catches right up. But I mean, they, we are building a lot of new homes, so a lot of people moving in town. So, uh, if everybody, if it were a taxpayer based system and everybody were on a list. Might be right under the line or right over the line as far as the truck.
About, okay.
You know, I mean.
The capacity of the trucks on the road compared to having added, but, but right now, but I remember the last time was they thought it would actually save people money.
It, it's a very cost effective program. We put a lot into it and I would certainly, uh, be very disappointed to see it go away. Whether it be subscriber based or taxpayer based, um, I know new people moving to town that I've interacted with, uh, have been very pleased. We just had a couple on Blackstone Street. They moved from Milford to here. Well, but they, today they got all hooked up with their towders. They, uh, about a week ago, they talked to Jack. Very, very pleased. So they were thrilled to be not only coming from Milford to Mendon, but the, uh, the trash program that we have in place.
That's crazy. I just have a finance question. Uh, overall, like, why don't these numbers match here? It's my first time doing this. I don't know what I'm missing.
There's the, uh, waste, waste collection items.
Waste. That's six hundred thousand. Seems like the difference, this is one eighteen here for last year and this is one oh eight. It's missing ten thousand dollars. And right, am I missing something? Where are we looking? Just right here, here's border health, the final line is a hundred and eight thousand four hundred. This is a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred on the paper.
Oh.
Okay, so we, we got twenty-four.
Oh, the ten thousand dollars, I'm sorry. Hazardous waste is built into it, but it was part of the trash disposal. We decided to separate that out.
There we go.
That's hazardous. Hazardous waste day is funded with taxpayer money, not subscriber money.
Okay, so that's part of your report because you managed it, but it's not part of your budget.
So the money's still in there, but it's just a, thank you. We tried to.
Different pocket, it's a different pocket.
Okay.
Right.
But the same coat.
Right. Anybody have any other questions for the board of health or? Thank you. Get downstairs here. Right. Thank you. Thanks. Uh, let's conservation next.
Should I pass that through?
Yeah.
Just to being on this side.
Right. Alright, so what I'm, I'm seeing at the bottom line, we're going from thirty-five to fifty of the current year to seventy-six by ten. An increase forty-one to sixty, a hundred and seventeen point oh five percent increase.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and that's the jump from a part-time position to full-time. The only other addition was for training. Just because we're getting some new commissioners and new staff, I think doubling the training. Um, the MACC, Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners costs about six hundred for the fundamentals training. And so for having new commissioners come, they should have those trainings if they don't have a background in the Wetland Protection Act. But that's the only other change. And then breaking down the consultant fees, services into the Beaver Line and the weed control for Lake Nipok got broken back down into the two lines. But other than that, it's just the full-time position jump.
Now, the, the, the costs of, um, the salary and other issues about site visits and things, are there fees and ways to collect money to offset these, these costs? Let's talk about that.
So the bylaw, the Mendon Wetlands bylaw has associated regulations as well. Those have fees associated with them. There's fees for the applications under the bylaw, the notice of intent, the request for determination. There's a certis, certificate of compliance fee and erosion control inspection fees. A lot of these fees haven't always been collected. Sometimes there's applicants coming in front of the board who present all their information and they get a yes or no, and there isn't the formal application on, as well. Where those fees would be collected and these regulations are up to the board to determine how much they want to, how much their fee, how much they want their fee to be. So those could be changed as well. Mendons are pretty low base surrounding us.
So is it fair to say that, that some of those regulations, some of those inspections were bypassed? And those inspections could be done and the fees collected and, and, uh, recover these extra expenses?
There, there's two parts to that. Uh, first, we did not have a professional salaried agent who was doing inspections. Many members on the previ, on, on previous conservation commissions were, had expertise in building and in large project work. Uh, as people retire off the board, we need, uh, someone doing the expertise. Uh, in addition, the conservation commission has been sensitive, especially to, uh, homeowners or people running small businesses. And we did not enforce, or we did not ask to collect the fees. As Mendon now turns towards larger subdivisions, as we get larger commercial projects, it's time for us to step up and have a professional who can not only evaluate their applications, but on a rate, regular basis during construction, go out and inspect and make sure that uh, there are no ecological disasters due to storms or, uh, contractor, uh, making oopses.
So is it? Is, is there a, a plan to, to do a breakdown or study to, to find out?
Yep.
How to collect an adequate amount of fees to pay for the cost of the professional inspections?
There's, there's, that's written up in, in what was just given to you. Uh, there's two different a, aspects. One of them is grants. Uh, a full-time conservation agent would be able to focus on grant applications, preserving conservation land, water quality testing, ecological restoration, culvert and dam repair, renewal, municipal vulnerability. Uh, the recent culvert blowout on Providence Street is a good example of we, it would be helpful if we had someone in town hall who had the expertise and the assignment to go out and routinely monitor stormwater, the planning board perspective and conservation aspects from the Concom aspect. Culvert issues and, and other flooding events impact habitat, which is directly under the conservation commission purview. The second thing is, as we mentioned previously, we are not currently taking fees that we are allowed to take from the Wetlands Protection Act and from the Mendon bylaw and applying them to a line item salary. Uh, there are historical reasons why, why the Concom hasn't done that in the past, but again, now that we are a growing town, it makes sense to have our agent investigate how to assess fees in a, in a equitable and nonverdant fashion. An agent would also be able to review how other communities are using economic development grams, continuity, preservation grants, uh, to supplement their staff fund. And then the final aspect is a split role. So if you want to say, say something about that possibility.
If I can just ask one question.
Okay.
You talked about there's the availability of fees into the protection act in our bylaw.
Yes.
Is there any legislative action or action we need to take at town meeting or at the ballot box to allow you to collect those fees? Or is it simply just a policy change?
It would be a policy change. The select, the, the Concom would work out it and then we could refer it up to the select board to say, because it does have a political impact. If all of a sudden we are asking people who are interested in cutting down trees to pay money, or if we are going to be assessing additional fees that contractors and subdivision developers have not paid in the past. We'd want to give them a heads up that we're now exercising our right under the WPA and bylaws to, to collect more money.
Have you started that process to make that proposal or is that something that's to be done?
Well, the, the only, the only requirement to update our wetlands regulations under the Mendon bylaw is to hold a public hearing. And so if I drafted new proposals based on surrounding communities, then we'd hold a hearing, the public of Mendon would be notified and we'd get public feedback and then we could implement those regulations. But it doesn't, doesn't need to go to town meeting.
Do we have any idea what the, what the breakdown would be for professionals, contractors and things versus, versus homeowners wanting to cut a tree?
Um, so it depends on the type of application and notice of intent under the Mendon Wetlands regulation is thirty dollars. In other communities is two hundred and fifty. And so it's, you know, they're pretty, a certificate, certificate of completion is fifteen dollars. That can be, you know, fifty. It's, you know, it's whatever we kind of set them to be. I haven't done the analysis of what other communities have because the first thing I do is not change the regulations.
I get it.
But those, the fees are, you know, very different depending on what we're looking at. And maybe dated.
Is there risks, like non-compliance risks to raising fees?
Yeah. So I, I would even just to mention, you know, DEP has overstepped the conservation commission twice in the last two years for issues of non-compliance with the Wetland Protection Act. And so when, when violations in the Wetland Protection Act happen, DEP can supersede all issues and decisions the commission makes. And so the commission enforces both the Wetland Protection Act and the bylaw locally until DEP has to overstep. And the other thing I would mention is that, you know, the risk to the town of, so when an application comes in, you have twenty-one days to hold a hearing. And if you miss that, the applicant can go to DEP and request for a superseding order, which has happened in the last year. And then, um, once you hold a hearing, you have twenty-one days to issue the permit unless there's an extension for the hearing. So if you don't issue the permit right away, they can appeal. And you also need to make sure that there's the ten day appeal period after the commission issues the permit. There's ten days for DEP to appeal the conservation commission's decision or ten property owners in Mendon to appeal the decision. If those forms aren't sent out appropriately, people miss the appeal dates.
And, and we have missed dates in the past couple, in the, in the past year due to being between clerks and agents. And that has had an impact on some of the construction sites in town.
Yeah. And then the other thing I would add that, you know, is crucial for the agent role, order of conditions, which are issued once the permit application goes through. Order of conditions are valid for three years. So most of my permits that are open now, you know, they're three years. Everything from twenty twenty-one on is three years. There's projects from twenty twenty and before that are still constructing that now have expired permits. So, you know, the commission has to decide how they want to move forward with said expired permits. But so the order of conditions has twenty set conditions from the Department of Environmental Protection. On top of that, the commission can add additional conditions and those include a pre-construction meeting with the homeowner and the contractor on site. Those include erosion control and sediment barrier inspections. And there's up to a hundred and fifty, you know, other towns include a plethora, like don't put trash down in the pipes while you're filling in material and you know, that any changes that happen on site, the commission must be notified. And so those are the responsibility of the agent to draft. The commission then looks at the conditions, says, we want these, we don't want these. And then the permit gets issued to the applicant. Uh, and that's something Mendon typically doesn't do. And if they have done it, there hasn't been a staff position to ensure that those extra conditions get recorded at the registry. Therefore, they're not enforceable.
We're, we're allowed to impose those extra conditions because we specifically have a wetlands bylaw. So any of the act, any of these additional actions that can get put in to a specific town bylaw related order of conditions, we historically haven't had the staffing to do that.
And the agent is doing enforcement through inspection?
The, so the agent does inspections, should do inspections, you know, pre-construction and during construction and then at the completion, when they come back for their certificate of compliance. Enforcement happens if there's issues. So if there's fill, dredge a material, removal of trees in the resource area, that all would lead to an enforcement order.
But you're discovering that through inspection or through?
Or, or citizen reports. The, the best example is we had the, the significant, you know, rainstorm in December. We had reports of two sites that had, uh, activities impacting the wetlands, forty-five, forty-seven Uxbridge and twenty-three Cape Road. We went out on both of them. Twenty-three Cape Road is under control. It was mostly clean runoff. Forty-seven, forty-five, forty-seven Uxbridge, we now have an active enforcement order. We've, we've reached a friendly accord with, uh, that, that company. And they are receiving extra special attention, uh, which does take up a number of hours each week.
So, I mean, so what I'm hearing is we, Mendon has a lot of things in place to protect and but we've never resourced the role to put any teeth behind the bylaws we have.
Yes, instead we relied on the expertise of individual commissioners who knew how large projects and houses were supposed to be built because they were inspecting them or actually constructing them in other towns. And so they were able to talk one-on-one with the individual contractors or site managers and say, you're doing it wrong. Get it done right or we'll come back and, and cause legal trouble. We're now losing that expertise and we want to move to a more professional approach where we have a, a staff member who is coming up with, well, here's what the WPA says, here's what the Mendon bylaw says. Uh, and they get to work and, and come up with the reports that we can file away.
Professional third party.
Yes.
And even further than that, you know, these big construction projects that are coming in, these new types of housing projects. Planning board always has a third party peer review as their engineer. The conservation commission should also have a wetland scientist peer review their projects. The Conservation Commission should also have a wetland scientist peer review their projects. And that's, you know, it's not a responsibility of a volunteer commissioner to. You know, the consultant has to call during office hours and, you know, you need that person there to have those peer reviews come in.
And that person is the conservation agent position we're talking about.
The the agent would set up the peer review.
Is there a cost to peer reviews that we need to see in them?
No, so Master General Law fifty three G sets up those accounts where the applicant must. Supply those funds for the additional cost to the town.
That's that's what the planning board is now working with on forty seven forty five forty seven Oxbridge.
But you require an administrative coordination in order for that to work.
Someone in town hall has to make a phone call to find issue or request for quotes. Review the proposals and then re work with the planning board or the Concom to say, yes, this is the person who's going to get hired. Making sure that the bank account is set up for the. Site owner to deposit the money and then to have the check written for the the third party person.
I mean, so personally, I had no issue with the the budget and the the position, but I'm learning an awful lot.
So does Jason listening in on our meetings.
I'd also like to talk a little bit. The Conservation Commission, Mendon at least has really only focused on the Wetland Protection Act. That's not their only role. The Conservation Commission Act of whatever nineteen eighty seven, I quoted it. The Conservation Commission is charged with also protecting the land and open space in Mendon. And so a lot of these open space and recreation plan goals from the twenty twenty three report. They don't have the Conservation Commission included in them when they should. There should be a full time staff member working on the open space plan. And the Conservation Commission manages multiple CRs, so does Select Board, but they work with. Outside land trusts to do monitoring and there needs to be staff. In Mendon following up on those monitoring reports, making sure that conservation restrictions aren't being broken, making sure. There isn't a shed in the middle of the field or a tree shed.
Incident, right? They're funding the CPC's funding to put markers back in.
Yes, and and that is Medicoit did a survey, said, there's a problem here. We didn't have staff and it fell through. They they nearly blew their tops and came back and said, we said, okay. And now fortunately, Isabella has been manning the phones, finding. Some a company that would be able to go in and 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 put them in and working with Anne Mazur and and the other committees. To make sure the work actually gets done.
Right.
Yeah, and I would say and that specific site, you know, they took the boundary markers out. They also removed part of the stone wall. They cut old trees. So there were more issues there that were reported back in twenty twenty one that aren't able really to be acted upon now. Besides getting those boundary markers back in.
Isabella and I are looking at the the Van Der Slus CR. It's under under review now. And we're taking all these lessons learned and making sure that, okay, that won't happen again. In in terms of what Medicoit is able to do, what the town is able to do and how we would have. Negotiations with the Van Der Slus or whoever takes the property after them.
There's one last question. You referenced the grant Ian just got, the Green Communities Grant. In terms of the split, I'm just wondering that is the split role intended to pick up some of the green communities administration? So like the ten hours Anne's mentioned in the past?
So a lot of communities are having this conservation agent, environmental planner, split role. Because the interests are very similar and the work, you know, it falls in the same department. So I also included in your NADICS, Environmental Planner, Conservation Agent Split Role. So I again, the budget isn't, you know, it's not my expertise. So if, you know, you decided it was thirty hour conservation agent, ten hours doing sustainability. Or, you know, whatever you decide to make the full time role. I think doing ten hours a week for. Energy planning and that sustainability role, I don't think it would, you know, come whenever that role starts. Say it's July in the next budget year, I should hopefully have gone through all these expired permits and all that. Extra work of cleaning up the office and having an efficient office that that workload. Because we don't get a crazy amount of permits compared to big towns.
I think there's a benefit to that as well. If I understand it correctly, we can go to a different tier if we actually build in. The sustainability piece for green communities in the operational budget versus volunteer. I think that's something states looking for us to do. So there's a payoff if we make that investment.
And I also think another part of getting to the climate leader community from the green communities. You need to do some of the stretch energy codes to get these more efficient houses and everything. There'd be some analysis of the building department, you know, what projects are coming in, how many projects, what is the current? You know, there's gonna be, there's gonna have to be some push from the town. If that's the route we want to go down because there is so much money in this Climate Leader Community Act. And then the other thing I will talk about, solar fields. Conservation Commission sees a lot of projects with solar fields and, you know, the green communities, they're supposed to be looking at how much energy worth creating. In the town from these solar fields. And so part of the lead climate leader community to reach Massachusetts State Energy Goals for twenty fifty. We have to reach eighty five percent clean energy by twenty fifty. Fifteen percent can come from carbon sinks. And Mendon has a lot of carbon sinks in our forests. And so if we're cutting down forest to put solar in. We're not really making a benefit to the state.
Across all of our households and municipal, like basically town energy total consumption.
So Massachusetts Energy Goals from the Energy Office, those are eighty five percent must be renewable energy. And then fifteen percent of that carbon can be a sink.
And that's our responsibility as a town to meet that.
I think, well, it's gonna come. Yeah, and so I.
Right. And so is anybody currently calculating that for Mendon? Is that with, is that one of the things that? Somebody in a, you know, in sustainability role and would be able to do, I mean.
Yeah.
It seems like that that would be a big analysis to figure that out, like both with the carbon sink. And because that would, you'd be looking at the the conservation land and.
Yeah, I I would be able to do the sink analysis. Highlighting, you know, our open space plan maps, which I also included. Those inventory, all of our conservation land and all the undeveloped land in town. And so I think we have to be. You know, there's a lot of planning that has to go into being strategic on what land Mendon has to acquire. What land is going to be most beneficial to acquire? And I think considering, you know, which forests have regrown for over a hundred years. Those are going to be the biggest trees with sinking the most amount of carbon. Those are the ones we should focus on.
Right, potentially to, if the opportunities come up to have the. Take out the conference conservation restriction as comes up sometimes to have, to be able to prioritize in terms of. The value for the carbon sink potentially.
And yeah, losing it to solar.
Right.
I I would bring up two other items which having a full time agent will will improve the community. The first one is responding to the community. A lot of the notification that the town gets that something's going wrong is someone. Drops by the office or leaves a voicemail saying, hey, there's a crane doing something or I'm seeing ruts here. Having a full time staffer means that Isabella is able to respond immediately. And refer to the appropriate other town departments as necessary. The second one is that hiring ha- having a full time agent is something of an insurance policy. I can't say how much money is going to be saved by doing regular site visits. But we can look at the impact she's had just in the past couple of months in terms of the Cape Road property. The Oxbridge Road property. We are now looking ahead to the Hastings Street property. We had a big gap during the planning board Concom Board of Health review for twenty three Cape Road. Because we didn't have someone who could help professionally evaluate the. Conservation Commission aspects. Over the summer, we're going to be having a remediation plan for there that Isabella would be overviewing. Forty seven forty five Oxbridge that put silt into some of the wetlands in late Midmuck. We're getting a remediation plan for that coming up as well. Yes, we have her working full time until the end of this fiscal year. But there's going to be an enormous gap if all of a sudden we go back to part time.
Well, I would be in favor of keeping it full time. We can get to that.
I am too. Makes my job a whole lot easier.
I mean, yeah, I think it does seem like there are a lot of benefits. I see especially the grant. The grant writing especially it, I think it could, right, effectively pay for itself and and maybe and some. Because we don't have anybody, I mean, I know, like Anne Mazur does a lot of the grant writing, but she is a volunteer and. Yeah, there's so much benefit to the town from these grants. So having somebody on top of that. And yeah, you you make a really good point about the 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 Providence Street culvert. Like, I know highway is looking at that at those issues also, but right, it's not just about the roads. It's about the impact to our water. Our wetlands.
I know the the Oxbridge agent has a huge focus because so many in this area are like from eighteen fifty with the farmlands and. The culverts are sticking out and they're not even connected to the stream bed, which means not only is it gonna overflow the whole road, but the. You know, the aquatic insects and the animals can't stay in the river.
Mike, just one thing, this this actually, I wasn't planning on giving an update on a call I had this morning. But this discussion is a really great demonstration of how what can be manifested from that call. So maybe if we have time allows later. I want to give an update on that call because I think this ties right into what we're learning. Is the classic, we don't know, we don't know in terms of.
Right.
Our operations. But I I think the biggest takeaway from this discussion is that, you know, there are. There's a mechanism in place to generate the additional funding required to do this. And I know there are there are probably some professionals who are who are in the building trades who don't want to hear that. Because, you know, they don't, they're not paying, Mendon is not charging them to do what other town, what other towns or municipalities are doing. And it's not their fault, it's our fault, right? Because we just, we've been. Whatever the reason we didn't, we just need to. And if we actually start. Using and applying the laws of the Commonwealth and even even some of the bylaws that our predecessors passed. We're always going to get around to doing that we never did. Then then clearly we should be able to generate the revenue and actually protect. You know, these resources, all the reasons that so many people came into this town in the open space. If we don't protect it, it's all gonna get washed away. And we all saw that a couple of times this this last year. They both you both get to be the most popular people in town if we start trying to just.
To to speak specifically to Isabella as an agent as opposed to just funding the position full time. Since she's come working for us in the past couple of months, she's demonstrated that she's quite a go getter. The very large packet that she just handed out to you is her ability to go out and. Find out stuff. She's a she's just finished here from college and her degree was not in wetlands protection. So she has spent a lot of time in the training budget. She spent time talking to our DEP circuit writer. And to her other fellow conservation agents in surrounding towns. And she's dragging us somewhat kicking and screaming into having repeatable processes, sensible workflows. Working with other town staff members in in a way that will help, as you said, further the the quality of life in the town.
That's great. Is there anything else you want to add at this point? Any other questions or discussion if we move on to?
One thing and it's bad news and bad news. So I'll give you the bad news first. The number that's up there fifty six one sixty is just representative of salary. The full time benefit package on top of that brings the number to eighty seven one sixty. That information hadn't been updated prior to this. That's my apologies for that. You guys will have a full view of all this down the road. That being said, not to take away, I will also echo. Carl's comments specifically about Isabella, the limited amount of time that I've had with her. In the the discussion, she's pass passionate, she's capable, she's smart, she's forward thinking and. You know, given the focus for this town master plan wise, open space and the importance of that to this community. Not having the proper protocols and and things in place to help support those efforts is really a detriment to the town. So having Isabella, we're lucky to have her. She's been fantastic. So, okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My way.
My turn.
Your turn.
Yeah, bastard lumped it. She'll swear it be quick, but you have twice as many lines.
But I'm not going through all the lines because it's pretty much level funded.
Before we before we dig into that. I always very called me up today, wanted me to come take a look at a project that that his department did. That I think in the past would have been done by.
You know, we've hired a contractor.
Like that's working hard down there.
Yeah, and. Pretty impressive. And he worked with the fire department. The fire department actually practiced pumping the water. To allow them to to alleviate the pressure so that they could get the work done when they when they blocked off the blocked off the outlet. But then the discussion is about kind of a potential change of plans for a big savings. On at Springbrook on Providence Road. So why don't you have Providence Street? Why don't you tell us about that? It's so.
I was always on that crew that did their color replacements and watching this happen yesterday. We replaced two. Sixty foot lengths of pipe. They were twenty four inch diameter, not five feet. But we had that road, the pipes taken out, new ones put back in and buttoned up for traffic in a day. That's not gonna happen on Providence, but it's not. Unrealistic to say that we couldn't have it done in a week if we chose to do it. So I started looking into talking about box culverts, started trying to get prices on those. I have a couple of feelers out there, different companies, but it's definitely something that after seeing how things went yesterday. I feel that we would be able to accomplish that.
That's half the time you had proposed, right? So.
We talked about it today. I say a week. That's if we don't run into any issues. So to be safe, we'll say two.
No, I'm saying your crew's your crew handled that job in half the time.
Yeah, we we slated two days of doing that that job and we had it back open to traffic last night. They've they. They rebuilt the head walls on each end today, but that didn't allow, that didn't stop traffic from flowing through. So I think it's something that now, after having the conversation this afternoon, really gonna focus on getting a price tag on what it would cost for us to do that. And then.
And if clear, you got you already you already have received clearance from DOT.
So I did talk to DOT. I still haven't seen their report and no, Mike, I haven't seen Beta's report either. They haven't sent me anything.
It's behind her.
They they, I asked them, I said, so if we were to replace this as a municipality and I'm gonna double check on this with their program head. But the guy in my office said, you as a municipality can do whatever you want out there. You want to do it as the town, you can. It's when.
Keep an eye on it.
They'll still keep an eye on it. Because it's on their register now.
So did have we moved forward on the engineering?
No, and that's why I put it on hold. I was, we were ready to.
Engineering may not be needed.
Right, if we're going to do it. I've held up.
Cut that out, drop a prefab in and pave over it, right? That's what you're talking about, like first.
Yeah, with simplicity sake, yes. Pick the two old pipes out. That's right. Take the two old pipes out, put one big box covered in. And fill it in with the material that's needed and obviously we need to make sure that the weight is gonna be okay with that box cover with heavy trucks going over it. I did speak to Kimball's today and they're willing to work with us on prices for materials and they'll even haul it in, which would actually save us time. Because yesterday, myself and the mechanic spent the day hauling materials back and forth to get that job done.
So when we talked about the engineering, the expectation is going to be three reck- three proposals being brought forth from that. And you you doing the work was one of those proposals.
In kind replacement would be one of those proposals. I don't know whether that would be us or somebody else would do it. I have not sent that proposal to them yet.
Right.
We have it signed, but.
No, I just want to make sure. So I I always, so you doing your team doing the work is separate distinct from the engineering. You've always said you needed the engineering done, even if you're gonna do the work.
Right.
So we're still gonna go ahead and tie and bond and spend the fifteen.
We're told that we supposedly after talking to DOT.
We don't need to.
We don't need to.
And I do again, I.
Well, that's, well, that that's the question. And if it's, and the and the whole.
Well, that's, well, that, that's the question, and if it's, and the and the whole point of it is, if the if the structure. Is this box culvert that's prefab.
It's just drop it in.
It's not, it's it's simple, but it's not.
So I'm sure there is something that goes along with.
But I just think about that, then, so back to a point made last week is making sure we keep track of ARPA funding. Right, so we might be bringing fifty grand back, you know, that's exactly what. Right, so we're going to know. Working on, I'm working on numbers right now, I've, like I said, I got to figure out how much material we're going to need based on the box cover. And availability of those, so that the box cover is what's going to drive everything else.
Do you think this could serve as a. An example of how to address other culverts we've talked about that might need to, I mean, if we do it right here, you feel that's repeatable in other places of town?
Yes.
While the experience, the teams gathering, right, while they're on.
So and and the fire chief will attest to this, because he was there for the majority of the day yesterday, he saw we both.
Saw pictures.
Yeah, well, we both are in agreement that things went really well yesterday, the team. Worked together, fire department helping out with the water pressure and then the guys, and we were down one guy. We have a guy that was out yesterday and we were still able to get that done.
Yeah.
Well, let's hope.
All right.
I still need to double check with Mass D O T and other to make sure that we're, I want to confirm that we can go ahead with this. Or we'd, whether we need engineering or not.
All right, let's dig into your budget.
Pretty simple. Aside from the salaries and wages with contract negotiations. The only other thing that we'd be looking at would be phone and internet as an increase of fifteen hundred dollars. Because we've added laptop and a tablet with both have wireless capabilities in the field. So that's the basis for looking for that money.
So basically.
That was easy.
I told you that, easy.
I'm not asking for a lot, I've asked for enough.
Rose, it's easy, drop in a, you know, prefab thing, done.
Our top, our, that tablet we have now doesn't have. Wireless capability, like doesn't.
No, it is connected.
Oh, we're adding.
We're, I'm adding funding because we've already connected the two of them.
All right, does anybody have any questions for?
I wait.
It's snow, it's snow and ice, we're maintaining same.
Love snow and ice.
Right now, we're maintaining the same, I can say that.
Salt is in the red, but we're still overall for snow and ice, we're not in the red.
For the, for the purposes of.
Budget.
Spent, you know, spending next year, we want to keep that number the same, that's all.
Right, so let's see the same number regardless of.
Right.
Yeah, the only, the only other flavor I'll add it, if you don't mind, John, is just our conversation around. Budget and it's not to say that any of these items haven't gone up over the years, but being a new department head and having the budget for the first time, sort of under his purview. I think, you know, we can do a little bit of analysis on the accounting side of things to just say, okay, John, you know, there's. Historically, this account is expended, this account isn't expended, you know, these are some adjustments that we may recommend. We make, you know. As a department, he's requesting this, we may have some recommendations as the finance team. On the heels of this, but we hadn't had this analysis done, part of us sitting down, so I would say right now, you know, the flat. That funding for next year is pretty conservative, I think. If Eric and I and Sean and we sit down and kind of look at some of that that analysis, I'll get back with you and say, hey. We should probably bump this up by ten percent or what have you.
And I, I just kind of want to get a full year of this budget and seeing how things go down there under my belt before we start asking to increase. Or there may be places where we can decrease.
Just last question, any progress on hot box and truck replacement?
Hot box got delivered this week, it's already registered, it'll be on the road tomorrow. The truck, I think, signed the purchase and sales is sent over to them, so we're looking at three to four weeks before we see that.
We did receive the insurance payment on the truck.
And the hot box.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get quick. All right, let's review the the draft A T M warrant, and this is our second pass through, we talked about it last week. And Laura, just to confirm, the the warrant closes tomorrow.
Four P M.
Right?
Yes.
So again.
Four P M tomorrow, yes.
So the, so the, but but the point I want to make. If there are any, any articles, although we may wordsmith the. Funding, everything from funding sources to to language, you know, we can't change the intent, they have to be on this, on this warrant for tomorrow. So if anybody, has anybody come to you or have we received any?
Anything additional?
Yes.
No, I believe, I think Anne said that she would have a change and then I have to send it to Charis to.
Oh, sure, yeah, right, so, you know. But for the purposes of, the the point is, once the warrant closes, we can't, we can't add anymore.
Not unless you reopen it.
Right, unless we reopen, right. So just to, just to, and of course, the the front part of this warrant, you know, pretty much always, always, always the same. Article one, you know, we have to make sure we have a balanced budget. Article two, elected salaries, article three, bills of a prior year, article four, the budget. Article five, receiving, accepting chapter ninety money. Article six.
This is new.
What's that?
This one's new from the last time you looked at it.
Yes.
So this was, I just. Jody, I just threw a placeholder in there to make sure that two fifty, the land sale article is captured. And I just threw in two fifty to go to the highway pavement survey, so that wasn't there last week, I added it yesterday.
Yes.
Okay, so that's six. Seven, we're talking about a one year, one, one time, one year capital debt exclusion. Do we have, we have funding that's coming off of the, off this year that we're. Going to use this to make it up, what what is the, what's, what's the, what's the debt that's coming off?
What's simply, the law requires us to staple the the use as well as the amount.
Right.
In the article, so we'll just need to make sure we state that.
So that three forty three, what what was, what were we paying off on that?
Oh, so that's the club debt.
Okay, so it's a club debt. And and the idea is that this would be a one time and we have to do it both on the warrant and on the on the ballot. The debt exclusion, it has to go to the, to the townspeople who have all already requested there, they're going to get mail in ballots.
And to Jody's note, the cat, the working group, the capital planning working group was recommending taking that. Three forty three and allocating it towards a senior center project. Okay, as the capital project, so this is one of those ones that will be dependent on the senior center passing, so if it does not, we probably need to re. Move that money somewhere else that we don't want to lose it.
Well. Right, so, but it'll be, it'll need to be on the ballot.
What's, what's going to have to happen? What's going to have to happen is if it's, if it's, if the intention is for the senior center. Yeah, so you you will have to change the order of where this comes in the warrant. Because if for some reason the senior center doesn't pass, or we change the capital project it's being allocated to. But that, but that has to be done by tomorrow. In other words, this. But, but, but my understanding is, and my understanding is, again, the intent of this one year debt exclusion, we just said the capital project. Would be the senior center.
Well, we could also say that for the purposes of. We, that, we're getting into wordsmithing, the purpose, the intent is capital project.
No, the intent, but it has to be specific to, my understanding, the intent has to be specific to.
At the point of the warrant closing, at the point the warrant gets printed.
My understanding is that the point of the warrant closes, we have to have the intent. Established, because if, in other words, if the intent is to do a one year debt exclusion to pay for senior center costs. And then the warrant closes with that, if you wanted to change the intent.
We have to reopen the warrant.
We'd have to reopen the warrant, that's correct, but then once it's printed.
Well, just also that it's got to be on the ballot also, right, so.
Correct.
And the ballot.
Has to be specific.
The ballot has to be specific and the ballot is needing to be printed, so.
Well, that's true, but but again, the the ballot doesn't have to be printed by tomorrow.
No, no, but I mean, but. I guess if there's a contingency plan, it needs to be both in the A T M warrant and on the ballot. I mean, does the ballot also need to be specific about which project?
Yes.
And it can't be just capital projects, it needs to be a specific.
And you know what? And I would take it a step further, even if it could legally, as a matter of. Good, good government, that would not be allowed, we need to be specific and we need to know. And I have, we actually have two seasoned town administrators here, so I would ask either one of you if I'm correct or if I'm. Wrong, or if it's somewhere in between.
I'm not so sure that you need to have the. Article written per se, because the article would go to council, council would write it, forward it back and then the board signs off.
I would agree on that, but my question is, what what I'm saying is, if if the intent of of this article, though we could change the order, if the intent of article seven. Is to 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 do for, and it says ensure level debt capacity, it says capital project, that capital project, the intent of it would be. If it's the senior center and we close the warrant tomorrow as, and it says senior center. And. The only way for us to change it from a senior center to a box culvert on whatever would be to reopen the warrant. And then once we get past the printing date and it and.
Printing date's the deadline.
That that's it, right, well, unless, right, I mean, I mean.
I would, I would hand it off to to council, like, you know, once a decision is made as to what the capital items are going to be, whether it's going to be the senior center or something else. Then that would be incorporated in its final context in the actual warrant, which would be signed up by the board select.
Right, so I mean, right now, the working group of which all three of us are members have. Pointed towards the senior center, but I think we know there's a dependency on it passing, so I think one of the actions should be probably engaging Charis to say, is there a way to. But primary or secondary depending on a contingent type of.
Yeah, well, I guess either, again, we can.
No, the, no, the answer, the short answer to that is no. This is a one year, and the and the biggest reason is it's got to be voted at town meeting and on the, and at the ballot. So for us to say that.
I'm not sure we're saying no to.
We're saying, we're saying no to, if it, it, when you said it's contingent on the senior center passing.
No, 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 a contingent being, it, the primary. Allocation will be to the senior center unless the article does not move forward, then it would be allocated to pavement survey. I'm giving John one more, I put it towards forestry, just because of our previous conversation.
Well, you know what, Will, well, the good news is, we'll get a clarification on that soon, right? But my, but my understanding is that, that kind of, that that, that's not the intent of it, of the, of the, of the law and we. I mean, I think it's bad government to do that. Because the warrant hasn't been. What's that?
I don't, I don't see if you're going to stay. I fear it'd be added upon as a backup. Quite right, but I mean, I still like that.
Well, you know what, it'll be, it'll be, at this point, it's just, it's it's a legal question, right?
The other question is rethink the allocation. Do we put it somewhere else that we think is more, have a greater level of surety?
I guess, I guess that would be, that would be my preference, in other words, if if we have a pot of money and we're moving it around. I would rather, if we're going to fund the senior center, we need to make sure that. That, you know, one, one article is not contingent on another, if there's something else we need to pay, I would rather do the vote.
Well, no, well, no, I mean, there are many articles that are dependent on the senior center, so I mean, I'm not, I I would say, what is your solution in terms of where do you want to put the money? That's really where we're coming down, because I feel like you have an idea, we want to kind of put the money, so let's talk about that and rework, so what what, where are we looking to put it?
I'm. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do all the options, and and the alternatives, are they considered part of the capital plan?
Yes. Yes.
I'm not, I haven't seen any of this, I'm not going to pretend to know any of the details. Just broadly speaking. You can close the warrant, you word, you know, the four corners of the article, you know, could be spaced wide enough. And accommodate, you know, with some language, you know, items from the capital plan. That it can have a generic thing, and you'll have the benefit of the time between the closing of the warrant. If there are a motion. Motion, as long as the motion is within the four corners of the article, you can affect that, so I don't think you're in a rush for time.
Right, right now, and right, and I guess, I guess the rest of the story is, and Mike made the point, it's, you know, the 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 printing deadline is the deadline. Because I guess what I'm getting at is, yeah.
Well, and the ballot.
Because, well, that's, well, that's what it is, same deadline, the printing deadline is the ballot.
Okay.
Right, so all I'm getting at is, I don't know, I mean, if there's a way, and townspeople will will agree with it. If there's a way to word it so that you can have both the warrant article and the ballot to say it's intended to be for the senior center unless this doesn't pass. And then, or some other way to word it, I'm. Right, the motion has to identify, and the ballot, and but the ballot question has to as well, right?
See, my address had nothing to do with the ballot. Or the timing of when the ballot has to be made available. First, now you're, was the fourteenth of May or something, is that what's your?
Yeah, it's usually, it's the third, well, the third is the.
Third and the fourth, you're right.
Like ten days, yeah, that's. Yeah.
I don't know what the statutory timelines are, you know, for publication.
Yeah, and if I'm not mis. And if I'm not mistaken, I think with the, with, you know, what town clerk was saying about mail in voting and everybody who's applied, those mail in votes have to be mailed. The, when the town meeting happens, everybody's already going to have their mail in ballots.
But yes, it'll be, right, it'll be both.
So what is the deadline for printing right now, Laura?
Uh, hold on one sec, let me look my calendar.
The the most important question.
Yeah, right.
Well, we have a bylaw about how they have to get mailed out to everybody.
I need to send this to the printer.
We we attempted, we actually attempted at an earlier town meeting to change the bylaw so we could put it online to give us a little bit more time. And.
I need to send it him Monday, the twenty second of April.
So April twenty second is the deadline.
And that's drawn dead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, I suggest engage Charis to understand what our options are. And if it's too convoluted, we're probably going to rethink the allocation of capital funds to different projects so we can be more targeted. Which was the point I was trying to get at.
But my second request would be, I'd ask the board to consider a budget to reduce the impact.
Sure.
And be significant about that.
Yeah.
You, you, Mike, you realize that's a totally different thing he just brought up.
Yes, I know, I know he did. I know exactly what you said. All right, um, article, so so we know that seven is going to be moved around if we keep it in its current form, because it has to be after the senior center vote. Yeah, yes.
It is, Phil, I'm putting on this nine.
So eight, again, eight, nine, eight and nine have to do with. With the assess the cyclical inspection and update valuation, which is there every year. Article ten, state matching, and again. I would just. Remember that the the state actually has. Some money this year for matching funds for for federal grants and it's it's a real possibility that. We could be able to get this money from that. From that state source, so that could be another source of a small amount of money for matching. Eleven, eleven, same thing with the opioid. Twelve is one of the, is for the police station debt exclusion, which again is here every year. Thirteen, fourteen, thirteen and fourteen are C M R P C. Well, thirteen is a C P C, the Community Preservation. Committee accounts for all the different. Well, thirteen is a CPC, the Community Preservation uh Committee accounts for all the different buckets. Um, again, uh, fourteen is the Affordable Housing Coordinator position. That's there every year, uh, fifteen. I added this one. Right, this is for potential retirement payouts, right?
Right, and I don't know, Jody, you have any input on that? This is looking to use one-time funds for the one-time payout?
So this is definitely a solution. I did talk to the accountant, um, he had a different vantage point, you know, but again, either way, we'll still satisfy.
So we might pass this over if it remains, okay.
So was this a way to not have it be in the operating budget? Was that because it's a one-time?
That's, that was.
Was that was the idea was this year? Right, uh, but.
It's gonna be next year, and then you're.
Okay, okay.
How do we want to handle this year to year?
But, but some of that will uh will minimize, because we're looking at actually some some changes that we we talked about doing a long time ago that had not been changed about um our uh retirement policies and our our personnel policies about not carrying over certain uh hours um that frankly was loophole and and something we're trying to.
That part of what we mean by retirement payouts.
Yes, I I think this is primarily more vacation one-time that we have, we're obligated to pay, is my guess. But I I would probably say, to your point, let's talk about it. It's more, I I would want to understand where it's coming from, the operational budget, that's where I had issue, so. Right, sixteen's the the uh land use report. This one, and this is something I was asking the Board of Health about, but this is establishing uh, it says municipal subscriber curbside trash recycling service as an enterprise fund. So I think the 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 plan was, rather than having the money at the end of the year go back into the general fund in a free cash, the idea is to create an enterprise fund, so the money stays in there from year to year, right? So it it stays with the intended purpose. Is that correct? Okay. All right, and then we see eighteen is, again, the the Water Enterprise Fund, um, like we do every year now. Um, then we have these revolving funds that are set up every year. Um, Article twenty, again, this is the uh article. Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
The only thing I was gonna say on Article nineteen that I've noticed is the trash recycling.
That is a mistake, that was.
We mentioned that.
Right, it was, no, but you're right, I I didn't look at it again, it was supposed to get fixed, and I, right, so.
And the mistake is that it's not supposed to be, yeah, so just cross it out.
It's a really, it's an enterprise one.
Yeah, that's, we've been, it it's it's kind of interesting, we we've literally been talking about doing this for about, I think, twelve years now, and.
Yeah, listening to the Board of Health talk about this, some of the last year has been very enlightening.
Yeah.
They're they're really on it.
Right, right. Okay, um, so twenty is the Senior Senior and Community Center Act, right? That's what we want, that that's, this is the article you were asking about.
Article film, that's yours.
Article twenty, that's the one. So the one we talked about, I think, was that seven? Um, we want to put that after.
There is a request to actually move this to up in the warrant to be earlier in the discussion.
Oh, that's, yeah, because.
That's really reasonable.
Right.
Yeah.
I I was gonna pass on that same request, the same. Just as early in the um warrant is as feasible, I think, just.
Okay.
Right.
Yes. On that, yeah.
Okay.
We'll do a couple of lands CPA funders.
Yeah, so maybe Elaine and I could take away, just make group things.
We'll, we'll, we'll just group together, yeah.
That'd be great.
We can, we can change it, we can, right.
So, all right, so twenty-one is is uh rezoning for Taft Orchard now. This is the, have we, where is the planning board on this?
Um, Mr. Chair, I can speak to this if you'd like.
Oh, that'd be great, thanks.
First off, for Laura, uh, Select Board has a typo in it, just.
Yeah, I saw that, we're a board, not a barrel.
I do that all the time, thank God they have spell check. Uh, Mike has brought this up to me, I I, not in this verbiage, but I did bring it up to the planning board um at their last meeting, this and.
Oh. So patient.
Zoning. Uh, and they all agree with the board, they they wanted to table this to the fall, because they didn't want to get in the way or distract anything regarding the senior center. Um, and that if the senior center passes and everything's a go this spring, they'd be more than willing to have me draft if necessary, or or place on on the Taft property, um, uh, some kind of mixed use. As you know, I've tried twice, maybe three times with different language on that property. I support Mike's um logic here, it's just I don't think the timing's very good.
You mean, in other words, we don't have the time to to do all of the background work to get something proper on the warrant?
Well, a little bit of that, and um I just think that it would be a distraction. I think, I don't know, it it's the planning board's decision, it's not mine, but my recommendation was to table it, because I thought it was a distraction, to have an article on the very property where it's been denied two or three times, where the senior center's going, and then there's gonna be a billion questions about the senior center and housing and commercial and this and that. I I just.
Jack, there is a school of thought that thinks that by doing this in a more holistic approach, it actually makes everything um fit together better. You know, it's not a, you know what I mean, you're explaining, yes, there's a cost to a senior center, but look, we're also looking to do some commercial development and and rate, you know what I mean? So the the the, putting them to, and I'm not saying right after each other.
I don't mind having that discussion. I I, let me add another detail that that um has just come to light, is we are going to have, the planning board's gonna have an application for the corner of Taft, and I mean, uh, north and north for the old Fino property.
Yep.
For a bank central office, um, that's on different property.
Yeah, the corner.
So here we have another piece. I guess so, since I've been here, there's been no. I, you know, I I think, I don't think we have time to, for to draft a brand-new bylaw just for this property, but you have two options, if if you really want to try this, we can put the, what I call the Armud, the one that passed town meeting, would easily fit on this property, and a matter of fact, if you remember, it was originally on the warrant, and we we culled it out.
It took it off, right.
Right, so we could just throw that on there. Um, I'd like to know, though, because the planning board is planning on having their public hearing on the twenty-second of April for two other articles that I think are down on the list, yeah. It it just got confusing, and it was a little too much, that's all I'm gonna say, and of course, I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
So, Jack, with, just the two things, with, if if we were to put that that previously passed article, you know, that was amended to eliminate this piece from, I think that was an overlay district, you're suggesting that that we could put that on now. Would that allow us to do what we want to do with still having the senior center and then doing the mixed use? It would?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and I, see, I think there's a benefit to saying, well, look, we had, we we've done this um in the past to properties near here up the street, and we were gonna do it for this, but there was an objection, because it wasn't going to be, because that was gonna remove municipal property. Well, now, we are using for municipal property, but for the rest of it, we want to put on some complementary um structures or, you know, mixed use that's gonna complement the these senior citizens. And I think having that group there.
With, and honestly, I I think the the, my original thought, Jack, was to take what we did early, the Armada, what you did before, and just use that as an overlay on this piece of property, not anything new.
I I, that's the easiest way, and I, there is no issue, I have no issue with doing that.
I would, my my thought is that if if you put that article on here, and we explain it this way, if the senior citizen pass, if the senior citizen, um, senior se- senior center article passes.
Community center.
Senior, senior community center passes.
Remember, I lost you here.
Yep. I don't know what that is, yeah. Yeah, turn off the camera, because it might, the bandwidth, right?
All right. My camera.
Yeah, right, turning your camera off.
Hey.
Is that any better?
I mean, that's what I was.
Now I hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
So bottom line is, I I can put it on, or I can draft the the warrant article, if you will, and you guys put it on, I'd like it near the end so that all the senior stuff is done. Um, but remember that if it passed with or without the senior center, you're talking about selling the property or leasing it, I guess, I don't think you want to get into the leasing business, but.
Oh, I see, the way that's worded, it would be for private use, so we'd be, so.
Yeah, you're only changing the zoning, you're not selling the property, so that's, but down the road it would be. So just let me know what you want to do, if you can let me know tonight, so I can uh change our public hearing notice, and we'll, we'll add it back on, it's your warrant.
Well, it it, again, I still say it's ultimately up to the planning board, I'm not gonna go against them, but I I would like them to consider this and put it on there um for us, because I think, I think it's our best shot.
Well, I'll tell you what, uh, Planning Board has a meeting on Monday, I will add this back on, and we'll have a another discussion, and uh if, I don't know, Mike, if you could come, or if someone wants to come and help with the argument. Monday at six, we can actually put you on first, I think, why not?
All right, Jack.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Stay in my lane, so I'm not asking, in my capacity, to remember the Fed comment.
Yeah.
As a, as a, as voter account, I I just want to understand. Slight more Carter's point. Basically, you described what sounds like transparency on future state, or what that is gonna look like, big transparency, so that everybody understands going in, it's not gonna be like layers of the unit. First, we do this, then we're back in another meeting, and then we do this, we're back at another meeting, and then we do this to achieve it. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, last week we talked, it is, last week we said, you know, at some point, we probably want to get together, the planning board and everyone to say, what are we gonna do with this property? We all have different ideas for use, and the thought was, between the housing production work that, you know, Elaine and I are working on and those workshops, it's an opportunity, we think, to drive some housing, some commercial, and make use of this property that is um right now owned by the town, and we've actually paid off. So, yeah, it's more of a, it's it's the senior center, and you go down the hill, you have some mixed use potentially with this zoning change. We can't tell you what it looks like yet, because we're just zoning it today. We may or may not move forward on it, but we give flexibility in the future to do something with this land if we choose to subdivide, sell, and bring something in there.
And transparency, as you're all riding towards the public meeting.
Right.
I I think that that would be helpful for folks in making a decision, not only the senior center, but finally on what the future holds for the entire borough.
Right.
I just want to.
Right. Sure. One thing about the removal of meetings, I've changed it several years ago. Other than that, outside from the town meeting, which wasn't enough specific. Not enough specifics about what was gonna happen with that. The town was worried it would flip to commercial and get sold, and no one was, so if we go that direction, it needed a particular division, talks about that next year.
Really, Jack does. I'm kidding, but I, but I think in the last, no, in the last town meeting, I think Jack did a great job of explaining, what does that overlay district mean up on sixteen, right? You know, how does that work? And I think we, at that time, we even put forward the fact that there are other parcels within Mendon, we think this type of zoning will benefit the town. Well, we're bringing the same, what you've already voted for in that space, we're bringing here.
Right, bringing, bringing it back in.
And and I will add, I think that was Phil that spoke, I can't, it's hard for me to hear, but um Philly, when I first got to Mendon, this was like my first job here, was to try to rezone, come up with a mixed-use zoning, and I did come up with some renderings and what's possible there. The, and it's all driven by engineering, it's driven by well-capacity, and it's driven by the size of the septic system. So the the housing and the municipal piece would be very limited, and that's in engineering. It has nothing to do it with um the zoning necessarily, the zoning just allows. We would have to go out to bid, we'd have to decide to go out to bid, and then in the bid, we would structure what exactly we want on there, how many units, how much square feet of commercial, where? What's the interaction with the senior center, maybe what's the interaction with this bank and commercial building that's being proposed, that kind of stuff. So, um, but but I just, I I gotta defend the planning board here. It's failed three times, and I just want to be cognizant of that, and you get a little gun-shy when you go there three times and you fail.
What comes to charm and and Jack.
And one, the one time it failed by one vote, by the way.
Yep, that's a positive, we're getting close.
That was a positive, yes, and to Mike's credit, Mike, yeah, blew the socks off on that one.
He tried, all right. Twenty-two has to do a generator again for the, for the uh, for the proposed.
Well, this is. I added.
Well, the legacy center, okay.
So what, this potentially, if the senior center passes for the new one, we pass over this, but if we're gonna maintain the legacy senior center as a senior center in emergency shelter, it needs a new generator, okay? All right, so you're planning to talk about.
What?
Yeah. That or either.
We'll figure. Twenty, twenty-three is pickleball courts at, at three North Ave, so at the, the new proposed center. Okay, twenty-four is for, this is the uh education equipment and and to accept federal or state grants, which will kind of bring us into the next article, so. Says land, what, say, land use committee?
Yeah, that's.
I don't think that's correct.
I think that, yeah, I don't.
I don't think the land committee part is not correct.
So this one is actually.
Our funds?
Yes.
So we may not need this article, and I thought somebody had an idea as to why it was on here last week, but this is a potentially coming off, since we've. This is for fire, right?
Yeah, this is one of their capital items, we allocated ARPA to. All right, so are we sure that we can take it off, because the warrant closes tomorrow?
You could, do you, you wanted to, you're telling me you want both of them to?
I looked over to see where Jody was on this one, and she's not there. Yep, but I'm pretty sure we can take it off.
Right, yeah. So twenty-four is coming off?
Okay. All right, as is twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, and of course, both of these, you know, what what's happened is, you know, there are, there's a FEMA grant requested, and we'll talk about that, that may pay for the, for both of these, and then now there's also federal earmarks that that may also help with that.
So the one thing we want to keep an eye on there is um, once again, we might be bringing our funds back into alternative use, if that's coming through, so.
Yeah, but we don't, but we can do that offline of this, because. All right, uh, twenty-six is, again, this is the the um, uh, the disc golf, but it talks about the location maybe on seventy-five Providence Street, but to be determined at a later date. Because I I I think we had this on in the, in the fall, right? And then we passed over it, because they weren't sure it was gonna be.
I think the intent here is there will be a specific site for the meeting, and right now, seventy-five Providence Street is the leader in the clubhouse. We didn't pass over it, we voted on it, right? It just didn't.
Right, right.
Well. Well, it didn't pass.
I think, yeah, and that the arguments, I think, somebody was arguing that it should be at the annual town meeting and not the special town meeting. So that was, I think, part of it. You made that ar, that argument. I remembered that, okay.
Um, I just wanted to add a change.
Okay.
The excavation cost is not going to be twenty thousand. It's estimated now to be thirty-seven thousand.
Which article is this in?
Article twenty-six.
Okay, I'm looking at it here. So instead of twenty, it's thirty-six, you said?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
And, and we're gonna, we're, the CPC is going to vote on the location and firm up seventy-five Providence or another location prior to. Uh, the printing of the warrant.
Hmm. The motion, yeah.
Okay. Alright, twenty-seven, again, that's CPA, but it's walking trails at, um.
This is seniors.
From the C, connected to the senior center?
Yeah.
It's two different trails, but one of the trails, the southern one would be, um, by the senior center.
So one, three North Ave to twenty Milford Street to thirty-one, where's thirty-one Brookview Lane?
It's sort of, um, uh, behind the town open space.
Oh, okay, right.
Towards Hotel.
Yeah, 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 I know that.
So just, just to clarify, Anne, there's two, uh, trails, but this article is dependent on the senior center passing. It would not go forward if it, if senior center is not approved.
Um, probably not. Well, no, it might still, because the, the, we do have the open space there. And so we were hoping to, um, write a trails grant next fall. So I think we would include that in there.
This is the money to do the plan for both trails.
Right.
Would, would there be any books that is separating?
So can we do two separate, we do two separate articles, one for the, one for the trail unrelated to the, to the proposed senior center?
Um, I could do that. I just need to find out what the cost is. I don't know exactly how they split. When I talk to the engineer, I don't know how the three thousand dollars would need to be split, but I can figure that, find that out.
If you let that go, we just don't have to expend, we only do one trail and don't expend the extra cost and it gets returned to CPC.
In other words, if it, yeah.
Right? So we don't need to.
Well, if it, if the, well, it doesn't matter, right?
I mean, I would almost.
That's true.
I would almost just leave them together. If someone wanted to make an amendment to, you know, do one trail at a time or something, we could do that. But, um. I don't know.
Yes. Twenty-eight, um, tennis court lights at, uh. At the, the, the field at Millville and, and, uh, half dab. Twenty-nine, um. These invasive plants, Anne, is that what the? Meadowport Woods. So is this that same pond we've been working on for years?
No, it's actually a different location and, um, when we were doing the monitoring walk, um. Someone from trustees noticed that there was a small patch of fragmites and so they really spread fast and are invasive and, um. So non-native, and so it's good to get rid of them while it's a small patch.
Okay. And then the affordable housing project, Article thirty, has to do with affordable housing at, uh, the, the, um, paddock property? Or is this, oh, fifty-two Providence, this is.
Which is, yeah, was actually another paddock property, but, um, and I think Jack will talk about this a little bit. But instead of six hundred thousand, it would be five hundred thousand. That's a change also.
Yeah, I can speak to this. As you know, um, we went out to bid last year about this time. Um, and unfortunately, we didn't get any bids, but we, we, we had a kind of post-bid conference. With three nonprofits that were very interested. And the problem at the time was that there were just too many unknowns. And the two big ones were. The well, the proposed well, which has now been approved by DEP. And getting the well water from the well to the site, which means we have to, what they call directional drill. And we're going to go under the wetlands. That has now been engineered, thanks to Anne and CPA. We use some monies out of their fund. The other unknown was the access road off of Providence has to cross a wetland stream or a stream. And that unknown was a little too much for them to feel comfortable about bidding. So we have hired an engineer. They have designed an access over the wetlands. And, um, probably during, I know during the month of April, they'll be permitting that. Through the conservation commission so that when the bids are ready, this round, which I'll get to. Um, we will have both those engineering items complete and approved. And I'm very confident, um, that we should get a bid this time. We, um, the bids will go out and be made public next Wednesday. The RFPs, um, with an opening on May second. That's, no, yeah, May second. That's the goal. And then, um, our, we have a selection committee of, uh, Anne and myself and, and, um, Dylan. As well as, uh, I believe Mike Goddard and, um, Tony Gemma. Um, have volunteered, at least they volunteered last year. We're assuming they're volunteering this year. Last year, we didn't get any bids, so there was nothing to redo. So, so we're hoping, you know, sometime in probably June, we'll be able to come to you with a preferred developer. And it takes a while. This takes a while. Once you've identified a preferred developer for them to get their funding. Finalized. They have to have all their plans engineered and in front of the local ZBA. By probably October. And then a funding round, they'll apply a federal funding round in December. So that's the goal. Um, and most likely they're going to want some kind of match, even though we have put some money into this. I just don't know what, and I don't know if they'll need it at all, but, um, we thought. It would be nice to at least have that money available if needed. We're certainly not going to tell them we have it, but. I guess it's public information. So that's the reason for the article.
Alright.
The, uh, if anybody wants to watch that presentation from the engineer, it was the last conservation committee meeting.
Like, just to, I want to jump back to twenty-four and twenty-five, the two that we're gonna.
Remove?
Remove, only because the language in there about accepting grants, if that's required. Then, you know, we would raise an appropriate from ARPA. I mean, it's not going to really impact it, you know what I mean? So I don't know where the language come in terms of accepting grants, but if we need to have that on a vote at town meeting, those articles stay. Does that make sense?
We do not, we do not need to vote to use ARPA funds.
Right, but I'm talking about the, the, the additional wording around is accepting federal estate funds, grants, gifts, et cetera.
You can do that anytime. You don't need to.
I know, I, I just, I didn't, somebody put it there, so I didn't know if we had to have it there. Alright, so we're, we're still on the idea, Jody, that we're using ARPA for the extrication tools and the, uh, breathing system?
Unless, unless we do get some, but the, the issue is, I don't know when we would. The question is, I, I think we intend to buy these before we would get that money. So the question is, if we do get that money, you know, can we repurpose the, that, those funds? That's the other question too. So if there is a possibility that we would get ARPA money for this, oh no, you know what? That, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. That, that, that FEMA grant is for the air supply system, not for these things, so.
That, isn't that Article twenty-five, the air supply system, or just?
Oh, it says extrication tools, oh, twenty-five.
Yes, the next.
I, I don't, well, this one, I don't know if this is. I, I don't know if this is, yeah, I, I think this is the one that, that, what the, uh, he's looking for the FEMA grant for.
I mean, there's no harm in leaving it there, because, oh, we're saying we choose to appropriate from ARPA versus, you know what I mean? So if there's a.
The passover.
Should want to leave them and pass over them, I'm sorry. Alright, we'll leave them and pass over them. I, I, I think I, I want to withhold the right to delete them before four PM tomorrow. How's that?
Okay.
Just I don't, the, the grant thing was new to me. We, we were going to go ahead and just execute. Alright. Yeah, I know.
Last, uh, presentation that the fire chief had put out there, he gave us those updates kind of real time last week at the meeting. Um, I don't think they're necessary to be on here, Article twenty-four and twenty-five. My recommendation would be to take them out.
Yeah.
Uh, for simplicity's sake, ARPA funds just need to be earmarked by twelve thirty-one and twelve forty. So even if we do receive a grant for one of these items, we can redistribute that earmark.
Right, so we, we don't have to execute on the purchase. We can wait to see what the outcome of the.
We're sponsored to be spent.
Yep.
They don't need to be expended by twelve thirty-one. They just need to be allocated.
Well, I guess my question is, but if we do, let, let's say we purchased the extrication tools in. July, using ARPA funds, and then the FEMA grant comes through in August.
Right.
And it was specifically for the, in, in this case, it was specifically for this, this, um, Scott Airpack system.
Right.
And we've already spent ARPA funds for it, and then the FEMA money comes in. Can we?
Yeah, that would be the question.
Yeah.
But I think from practical, I think if Jason's applied, we say, do not purchase until we know the outcome of the, so don't, avoid that scenario.
You don't pull the trigger to it. Right, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting.
So, we're back to taking them off.
We'll check again tomorrow morning and figure.
Alright, let's, let's, thirty-one is for, um. This is a conservation restriction. Is this the one we talked about, Anne?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, on Thayer Road and we're still gathering details, but the amount we most likely will be asking for is the five hundred thousand.
Okay, alright.
And Article thirty-two, um, Jack, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we had this as a placeholder. Um, um, as you know, we've identified, uh, a good potable. What, what well source off of, uh, Providence and Thayer. One, uh, the, one of the items that our consultant has told us is that as we move forward with DEB. To develop this site, um, or even to preserve the site as a future well source. We need to own all the land, not eat, not uneasement, not any other kind of form, but ownership. Of all the land within the zone one circumference, which we own almost all of it, except for one parcel. It's all wet. It has a land, it's has a very low value. Um, as far as the assessors are concerned, and I've written the gentleman who owns a, a letter. He hasn't responded, unfortunately, um, but Dylan, and I believe Anne, I don't know if Anne was there. Ran into him and had a discussion with him and he still isn't sure. And so. They really wanted this to go to the Springtown meeting so that, you know, we could allocate. It's certainly CPC eligible to fund to, to buy the property. And then in the fall, we actually have an article to accept it and, and close on it. Or, or maybe this article could give us that, right? That's a Kara's question. But unfortunately, I haven't had a discussion with the gentleman and I have nothing to put here. I, and so I'm a little bit of an aquandry. Um, I think it can wait till the fall. Our consultant wasn't so pleased with that, but Mike, you've been involved with this a lot, Mike, the chair. And I'll, I'll pick any direction you want to go.
Mike, what I would request is that, you know, it says CPC may have an additional article by the warrant closure. What I would do is take the lang, just put language, uh, doesn't have to be correct, just with the proper intent. Because I would agree, you know, I talked to, to Vinnie a little bit the other day.
Yeah.
I think it would be a good idea for us to get this done if we can now.
Yeah, I, and it's, it's very low value if it's.
So if you just, right, well, it's. I don't know what, what other purpose it could possibly use for, except what we're looking at.
I know, I know. So I, I'll put lang, I'll give Laura language before four o'clock tomorrow for this. And we'll keep working on.
Before noon time.
Even better.
Okay, Laura, before noon.
Sure, Mike Goddard.
Yeah, Jack, just, we've talked a lot about water now and ARPA, um, maybe next, our next meeting, we can have a topic. Just to make sure we're all on the same page on allocation of ARPA as it pertains to what, you know, the, this water project expectation. Can you?
Yeah, I think we should. Um, we had a team meeting with Woodward and Curran today to get us up to speed. And as you know, we're going to apply for another grant, um, through the one-stop. And they're getting close. They're getting close to where, um. Um, we need to talk about what kind of ARPA commitment you ha, have made, can make and will make. And, uh, yes, I would like, I did talk to Dave, uh, about this a little bit. And I'd be glad to come to the next meeting if necessary in person and, and have that conversation. I think it's important.
Jack, I have a, a link that I can, uh, email to you. That there's, there's actually, um, apparently a process in both Senator Markey's office and Congress and Ashen Plaza's office. Has talked to us about the federal earmark system. We're going to talk about that in a minute, but.
I saw that on there, Mike, and we talked about that at length today with our consultant.
Okay.
He has the form and we are prepared to, to give you a filled out form. With some funding requests for this water system.
Great, if, if you can, if you can join that, just to see what's, what's explained, that might be useful if you, if you have the time.
Okay.
Alright, great. Um, go ahead.
I, yeah, I have a question, um. Uh, on Article twenty-seven, do you want me to divide that into two articles?
I vote no. No, I don't think we need to. I don't think we need to. Let's just keep, leave it alone.
Okay.
Thirty-three, um, this is just a, a bylaw to say that if you have a, um. That if you have a citizen's petition, it's got to be in, got to be in the town hall, um, by the, uh. By the date that the warrant closes. No, I'm not sure either. I'm just saying that's what it says. I don't know how we, yeah, perhaps. Yeah, alright. Thirty-four, this is the, uh, this is petition by Eric Hodges. Thirty-five is, uh. Again, a change to the waters, to the overlay district to protect a water source down on Providence Street that. Um, it's tied into what we were talking about earlier. Uh, there's no real cost to it. It's just, um, just a change of zoning. To protect this particular water source and then.
Mike, can I speak to that real quick, real quick? I promise. That's an overlay that DP is, um. Mandating on us. We should have had one anyway. And this is to protect the aquifer beyond just our water system. It's to protect everyone's wells.
When did we find this out?
What's that?
When did you, when did we find out that we should have had this already?
Well.
Were we talking, we were talking about doing this before we knew that, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Planning board went over it. There are some. There may be some questions from the agricultural com, community. So we're trying to reach out to them and, and have a meeting with the agcom about this. Um, but it's really just to protect the aquifer from obnoxious uses and, but it is a zone change. Um, and it takes, it's almost two-thirds of the town, this, this overlay district. That's how big of an aquifer you have.
Oh.
That was not, that, that was not the original conversation. Nothing wrong with it, but I just, when did you, when did, when did you discover this big change?
Probably three weeks ago.
Okay.
I wanted, you're right, I'm, Mike, I remember it vividly. I wanted to just limit it to the zone one or two of the well. And DEP said, no, you got to protect the entire aquifer. It's the entire town that has to be protected beyond, whether we. Beyond whether we ever develop this well or not. It's everybody's wells. Um, so I think. I think it's a positive thing. The planning board actually really liked it. They did have some questions about agricultural use. Again, we'll meet with, uh, the agcom and, and maybe hold a public forum to, to educate me. And the farming community as well. Sorry, Mike.
No, that's okay. And thirty-six is just to accept Ponce Street, which we've already been through the rest of the process. This is the last step.
Yep.
And, and that's the warrant for the annual town meeting. Let's, uh, number nine, which is the Congressional Earmark Grant Program. If you want to, Dave, if you want to talk about that.
Well, we've been contacted by both, um.
Senator Markey's office, right?
And Congressman Alex Slott.
Right.
And the closing date is, uh, March twenty-second for the congressman and, uh, and the other one, I didn't notice a date in there.
Yeah.
They said they were going to announce a date, actually.
Yeah, the.
In the Markey, uh, email.
I, I had met, uh, Senator Markey and his staffer Liam Horstman at the M M A conference. And, um, gave me their card and said they, they wanted to help the town. And I said, of course. And, uh, and then they sent, uh, Jason, Jason Bangma, our fires, fire chief had, uh. Actually had, uh, they, they had called him and asking if, if they could help him. He submitted, told him that about this, uh. This opportunity. He submitted the, the grant. They said, you know, can we help you with this? And then we, we passed it over to Oshin, to Congress and Oshin Plaza's office. They get back, uh, specifically asking for details about the, the number of the applications. So both the Senator's office and the Congressman's office is apparently kind of come on a personal mission. To make sure that we get this money and then talked about other earmarks and other ways. And this is a follow-up to a conversation that Mike Gardner and I had about the senior center. Um, because if you remember a while ago, they were told us, well, there's nothing they can do. And then we kind of changed the focus of, from the emergency preparedness standpoint. Um, and, you know, roads and, 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 uh, I, I think that kind of helped us get in. Right? Anything else today?
Uh, no, basically, uh, the, the key is to get those projects to the congressman and to the Senator's office. I have been speaking, uh, on a, not speaking, but emailing Dana Hanson and, uh, the Congressman's office. We forwarded the executive, uh, uh, summary from Woodward and Curran. And, uh, just to let her know where we're at. And, uh, we got the notice that we're gonna, you know, that's one of the projects. And we should be thinking about filing. I talked to Jack today about that and that's why he had, in part of his discussion with Woodward and Curran. Uh, discussed the potential for that funding project. I did go online and I noticed that. They have done a number of projects of, of the years, uh, for substantial amounts of money. So it's just a matter of trying to figure out how much we want to make a request for and, and basically filling in the paperwork by March twenty-second. For the congressman. They, well, for Markey's office, once again, they hadn't, they said that the notices to be, uh, determined. Just to keep your ears open. So I don't, I'm not quite sure when they're going to be and whether they're the same kind of, you know, funding sources.
Yeah, what it, what it, what it comes down to is I, I think the congressman can put the earmarks in and then it, it mimics the. The state where typically the, you know, the, uh, the House puts the earmarks and then the Senate rubber stamps it or, or. Uh, increases it if they can.
So the question I would have is, is it?
Yeah, from a follow-up. So Mike, you've sent a detailed email to their office saying this is bullets, right? So I guess maybe the, I just had a similar question is, do we need to do any follow-up with this new link that we have to make, to formalize? What you put in the email?
Yeah, that's, that's where.
It wasn't all, it was, it was just a general. It was not a formal, it was just, you know, the, 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 the intent and the purpose. But they're looking for specifically, you know, there is a, there is a form like Jack talked about. We have a form. So there's a form that needs to be filled out with specifics.
So should like Phil and maybe Mark Bakino and maybe Mr. Curzy get together with Dave to understand. So I think, I think Mark and Dave.
Mark or Dave.
Be good for the emergency management side of it.
Yeah, Chief, Chief, do you, can you pass that on to Mark? Cause I think he's, he's still out of town. Is that right?
Mark's out of town till next Monday, so.
Okay.
And any additional support from the architect? So it might be what Mark knows plus, glad to assist anyone we can, you know.
Can I, I mean, can I suggest, David, that maybe sit down, Phil, when Mark's back in town and maybe Chief Curzy to sit down and see? How that needs to get put together?
Yeah, whatever you do, that's always there.
Bring that number down.
Town administrator report, um, the, I guess everybody's aware in two weeks I'm going to be.
What?
Filling the bottoms, the, my obligation under the contract. And we have, uh, had some discussions about what the next steps would be. And as part of that discussion, you know, whether we should, uh, uh. Proceed and hire a new town administrator interim. Uh, we also had some discussions about, uh. Whether we should, uh, extend the process again if we hire a new town administrator into the future. And as part of that discussion, uh, uh, Mike had, uh, spoken to Jim Purcell. Who is a experienced, uh, county administrator, forty years of experience in the field. Uh, he, uh, is consummate professional and, uh, actually an upgrade from me, I would say, given it's that good. Uh, he, uh, he's here tonight.
Wow, you gotta take him for dinner a couple of times for that.
But that's the truth, honestly. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just offering to the board. The potential of, uh, allowing, uh, you know, uh, uh. Jimmy to fill in until such time that the board finalizes exactly what they want to do in terms of filling. The position on a full-time basis.
And, and it just to, to further flesh that out, is, I think everybody's aware, we have a contract with the Collin Center, um, until the end of June. And in talking with Maria Cardy yesterday, uh, her suggestion is, you know, that, that, that they had originally, um. Done all the background work of putting together the selection committee and everything else and then advertised on December first. Um, you know, that has not produced a candidate yet. Um, so her recommendation was that she would. Re-advertise on April first, uh, with the hope to, to, um. Complete the process and, and hire a candidate by the end of June. And since Dave's has a hard stop at the end of March, the suggestion was that, uh, Jim Purcell, which we had discussed. I had discussed with him doing this from the beginning, um, and he simply was engaged elsewhere and he did volunteer. He's a town resident. And did volunteer and is on the selection committee, um, just like David is. But, um, he has, he's agreed now, um, assuming that we're all on the same page and we want to do that. That he would, uh, he would pick up with Dave left office and bring us to the finish line by the, uh, by the end of June. I guess if, if anybody has any comments about that.
Question, um, back to the list, Dave. Do you want to put together? Do we, we had also talked about the idea that, you know, David's doing certain things. What are those things? And how do we support them, right? So one solution would be for Jim to join us and pick up everything. The question would be though, I still want to, what are these things? Because if this search goes, does not end in June, I don't think Jim's commitment is in perpetuity until we fill it. I think there's an expectation. You, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it, it's finite. Let's try to.
If, if I'm in, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, please.
Maybe we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. Um, there's only a couple of people who know who I am. And, uh, 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 in on TV and as much as I loathe using the first person singular, I, I honestly do. In terms of background and things like that, I'd like to.
Sure, please.
A little bit of that in the.
Please come on up.
And the transition questions, Mike, I, 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 Mr. Glenn, uh, that you ask, certainly address.
Sure, if you want to, if you want to come up and right into the microphone, so.
That transition, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thanks for indulging me, Mr. But, um, I saw the, um. I saw the group email with, you know, do not respond, uh, on it that you sent out either yesterday or today. And, uh, my background was a little bit muddled, so I wanted to, uh, I, I wanted to explain. Uh, uh, a bit. I started in the business and, uh, well, first of all, uh, I'm a Mendon resident. I've been a Mendon resident since, uh, two thousand and two. Uh, in nineteen eighty-three, I was actually your first town administrator. Uh, I was actually the shared administrator between Mendon, Upton and Millville. I did all three towns. Uh, at the, uh, I, I, at the same time, um, uh, my career spanned. You know, almost, uh, 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 well, thirty-seven years before, uh, uh, before I retired. We had some family health issues and I actually went out a bit early. Um, but, uh, uh, since my, um. Uh, uh, since my retirement, uh, I've been the interim, uh, uh, administrative officer in the towns of North Andover. Sherburne, Ashland, Carver, and I see that Jack Hunter, I worked with him ten years ago. He hasn't lost his fastball. Way to go, Jack. Um, uh, Swansea, uh, Swansea, actually twice. Uh, West Boylston twice, Douglas, Lester, Avon twice, Rockland and East Bridgewater. Uh, East Bridgewater was the last, I'm sorry, no, Avon was the last gig that I, uh, uh, that I did and that was, uh, and that was last year. Um, I started out, uh, as a planner, uh, with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, became Oxford's first, uh, uh, planning director. Um, uh, in the, uh, in the early eighties, I worked for the Webster Redevelopment Authority for a period of years. And, uh, then came to the Blackstone Valley and did that, um, um. Uh, that, that, that three-town, uh, uh, gig. We called it, uh, the name of the position was Circuit Rider. And depending on your, your feelings about me, it was either Circus Rider or, or Circuit Rider at the time. But, uh, uh, but it was a, uh, it was a good experience. Uh, I then became the manager of, of the town of Ashland. And, um, in another family decision, given all the night demands, uh, that I had, uh. Uh, uh, is the, uh, is the manager in Ashland and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen concurrently in, in the town of Oxford. Um, you know, I had a family life and, uh, I took on a challenge. Uh, uh, to be the Worcester County manager. In nineteen eighty-eight, there was legislation, there was charter legislation that the state. Uh, he had enacted, uh, giving, uh, counties a chance, hey, you know, to reform or expire. And, um, it was, I went from three or four night meetings a week. Uh, uh, between Ashland and Oxford to three or four night meetings a year. Uh, uh, the county at a time when my kids were. Um, you know, really needed my, really needed my presence. And then when they got old enough to be embarrassed to be seen in public with us. Uh, I went back into the municipal end and, uh, worked in the town of Leicester for eight years. And, uh, moved on to the town of Norton, uh, for an additional eight where I, uh, where I retired. So I've been in the business since nineteen seventy-five and, um, uh, I made mend in my home in, so I said, two thousand and two. And, uh, yeah, very, very much enjoyed, uh, uh, the experience, tried to stay under the radar, you know, you know, I hid. Uh, I hid for a very long time until this guy, um, started beating on my, uh, uh, on my phone. And I, I indoor a couple of years ago, uh, when you had a, uh, a funding hiccup. Uh, just prior to, uh, uh, to town meeting and, um, uh, I told Mike about the Division of Local Services. Uh, and, and gave him a couple of sample documents. Uh, you know, I'd worked with those people before. And, um, uh, so the, uh, the Division of Local Services report on the town's finances and the, you know, and the recommendations. And, and things, uh, uh, that came from that were born out of that short-term crisis that you had, uh, that you had before. So, um, I, I've enjoyed very much doing interim, uh, at work. I generally do one, I call them gigs a year. And the typical search period is about. Anywhere, you know, between sixteen and twenty weeks is, um, uh, is the norm. I never imagined I'd be sitting here. Uh, talking to you about providing interim services to the, uh, to the town of Mendon. But, um, uh, after, um, after yesterday. Uh, you know, it became apparent that, uh, that we had to do something and, uh, my wife and I decided it was time for me to step up. If you'll have me. So, um, that's it by, by way of background. And, uh, uh, thank you for the chance to, uh, to say that, Mr. Chairman. So.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah. Um, as to the transition, uh, 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 Mr. Gardner. Customarily, we can work out a specific plan, uh, 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 for that. But, um, uh, when I spoke to the chairman, uh, uh, by phone today, uh, it was really important to get a consensus of the board. You know, before we get too far, you know, make sure that the board is on board with this succession plan. And, um, uh, but customarily, uh, in, in, in this is the first time I followed an interim. Uh, 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 before, but customarily, uh, I would, um, uh, before my actual start date. I would give you the equivalent of two free days. Um, and that time would be spent. Uh, speaking with members of the Board of Selectmen as to what their, uh, uh, specific, uh, uh, objectives are. And, um, you know, how do we communicate? You know, some people are readers, some people are, uh, are talkers. Some people are, hey, you know, you, 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 you agree to, you know, with the selectmen the most effective way. Yeah, uh, to communicate. Uh, and again, to get the, uh, your goals and objectives gone. I would talk to key players, obviously, David is. Um, uh, uh, is, uh, is very important and I would, um. Uh, I would read, you know, prior to my start, as many documents as I, uh, I, as I possibly could. I would ask also the Board of Selectmen, I have a boilerplate, uh, uh, document. It's a questionnaire that you send out to department heads. Uh, and that, uh, those were, those replies should, in a manner of speaking, be on my desk on the first day. Um, uh, uh, that I start and it's like a tabletop exercise, sifting through those things. Um, uh, first and foremost, I know the time of year. I know, you know, what things have to be done. Uh, in any given month, sometimes down to the week or, uh, uh, or day. Uh, but the department heads themselves, um, uh, whom I would support and try and make, uh. Uh, uh, as successful, would answer questions like, are there any, um. Uh, 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 procurement issues involved? Now we're entering into the last quarter of the, uh, of the fiscal year. Your supply lines for supplies and services and things like that have to be wide open on July one. So are there any lingering, um, uh, procurement issues or anything like that along the way? Um, are there any personnel issues, et cetera, et cetera? So collating those things, half your work program is done. Uh, you know, for the, yeah, for the ninety or hundred and twenty days or however long this thing, uh, uh, this thing might take. Um, it's proven to be, you know, pretty successful and, um. Uh, naturally I would meet with the department heads in the first week, you know, the drill there. And, um, uh, and I understand there's a, you know, a, you know, a fresh, uh. Uh, a fresh breeze came into the town hall when Dave reinstituted those, uh, at those meetings. I understand it had a, a positive effect on morale and, um, and I aim to keep it that way if, uh, if I possibly can. Uh, I, as well. So those are the, kind of the mechanics of, of, of how you transition. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to.
I just, I know Chief Curzy has, has his hand up. So Dave, Dave, do you have a comment or a question or a concern or?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, this has nothing to do with Mr. Purcell in general, but, um, so I guess I'm wondering where we headed down this path. I don't see anything posted on the agenda, so I'm wondering if we have a opening meeting law violation here. Because I mean, obviously we're in a discussion here that has gone awry from our. Has gone awry from our actual agenda. So that'd be my first question. My second question is.
There's no action item on the agenda.
Yeah, there's no action item on the agenda. He's introducing himself. We're going to vote on this at the next meeting.
Okay, so secondly, we have, I mean. A member from our committee now, it almost seems like a conflict of interests. And we haven't posted this. Wouldn't we want to do what we did with the marsh? And look for all candidates possible who could fill into the job and find the best fit for Menden? That would just be my, my inclination. It just something. Doesn't seem right with this, this, this procedure right now, so it's procedural that I'm questioning more just.
Sure, two, two, two things, Chief. Jim Purcell was one of the, one of the choices initially. He simply wasn't available at the time. Secondly, you know, time is of the essence. We do have this contract that still exists with. With the Collin Center. And we need to continue the process. Now we have a.
I got you, but we had interviews back in eight, nine months ago and you never interviewed for the position and now all of a sudden we're gonna. Throw someone into a position without looking at all possible candidates. I mean, just procedural. I mean, I think we, we need to stick with procedure and doesn't seem like we're doing that right now.
I'm the process guy here. Sure, I kind of understand where Dave's coming from, but I would also say I want to separate. The recruiting of the permanent replacement. From the decision to bring in another interim. I think these are two separate paths, so.
Yeah.
I just want to kind of. And, and we probably, I don't know if we can even talk about the permanent TA replacement process, just said. Suggestion there. In terms of. Yeah, I let others weigh in whether or not we're straying off the agenda in terms of discussing this, we're not going to vote, I guess.
Right.
But I did have the question, actually, I was going to ask Mr. Purcell earlier, had more to do. With not, not the transition, because I'm. I'm aware, we've met, right? So, you know. Comfortable with the qualifications. It was more about. Given the, how long it's taken to. Do a search so far. Is there a, from your perspective? If you, if you were to, were to post this and recruit and you were in a candidate, is there a? Length of time you, you see yourself serving? So is it a finite time if you were to step into this role? Like three, six, nine months, or is it, would you do it until we find the permanent placement? Because to me, the biggest thing for me right now is. We might have to, I mean, if we. This is taking longer than we thought. Yes, Dave has been great in terms of extending to help us out and that's coming to an end. At some point. We also have to explore, I mean, if Mr. Purcell were the candidate and he would say, until the next person's found. Perfect, I've got no issues. But if there's a finite window, you see yourself looking to. Step up and serve. That might change the conversation.
I, I'd like to be clear on this. I'm a retiree. I have no intentions whatsoever. I didn't retire to work full-time. I have. I have no notions, no thoughts. Of being a candidate for the permanent.
No, 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 my, my assumption is within the parameters, David's helping out.
Okay.
Like David had a hard stop.
Right.
That's, see in three words.
I would. I, if. I, I, if there's a consensus. That you want to talk to me further. We can work that out. Okay, I've gone as long as. And I wouldn't offer this to you now or at any other time. This is not a negotiation here right now, but I've gone as long as thirty-one weeks. But those were very special circumstances in, in one of the towns. I would expect. To make myself available for. Probably three months, possibly spilling into a fourth. If there's a notice period that somebody has to. I has to fulfill, is there separating from their, from their other employment, but. As I say, I.
That's perfect. I mean, in terms of answering my question, so we had the, the question of. First is. Do we? Do, are we, do we go forward with replacing the interim with an interim, right? Or are there any other alternatives? So this is a discussion we probably need to put on the agenda to have rather than have it now. But it seems like we, we got to start there to say. We, we think it's a great idea to. Bring, bring a candidate in as an interim. Or a period of time.
Well, I think, I, I think the important point is that because of the, because of the, the timing of the circumstances. And this is one option, you know, when I talked to the. Town Administrator about admitting the agenda, the idea was that. He just wanted to meet everybody, so everyone would be familiar with it. So I, I think. I think the truth is, we have a week now to put it on the agenda and then. Discuss it, but, but the idea was, and it was actually Elena that said, you know, I realized, for some reason I thought everybody. Knew Jim Purcell and now you, and you didn't, and now you do, actually.
We bet at the end of May.
Sure, but.
But now I realize he's, he's been doing this for. Forty odd years. Well, in seventy-five.
It's my forty-ninth year. Yeah. So, so Mr. Chairman, well, I'll. I, I'll say this. Mike and I kid each other sometimes, but. You know, I, I, yesterday. Things got into a scramble, the. The Town Administrator Screening Committee, which I'm a member. I was set to interview a, a candidate and, and that collapsed. And so. So the chairman reached out, you know, and we talked and I said, look. I said, Mike, you know, you're, you know, you're a real good guy, et cetera, et cetera, but right now. I don't want to be your guy, you know, I want the board to. I want the board to see me and at least understand, at least understand who it is that, that I am. And so he was gracious enough, he said Dave was going to talk. About his pending departure and the status of things under his town administrators' report already. And we did discuss the open meeting law. And. I thought that we could talk in very general terms and be very careful. Not to get on the verge of, of an action item or giving it the appearance of being an action item. So. And as for. Going through a process of interviewing people for. To be the interim, you've got. What's day the thirteenth? You've got two weeks to get through that process if you want to do it and. And I customarily, I. This sounds really arrogant, I probably shouldn't say it, but. I haven't done a cattle call since two thousand and fourteen. I'm sorry, two thousand and fifteen. I generally. I, I, I meet with the board if. If there's an agreement to move forward, that's fine, but. It's uncomfortable sitting. With two other forty-plus-year colleagues of mine, friends and things, you know, going head-to-head in competitions like that, it's. And. You know, people just call and I got called here. I never imagined that I would actually be. Considering this.
I'm not so, I mean, we get to define the process, so what we did in the past is not necessarily we do in the future, so. Point taken, and I think to me it's more of. I think there's two avenues we could go. Interim. Or are we in a position to support the operations in the near term? All contingent upon getting a full-time. In front of us sooner.
There's no question. Still going to continue the process.
Right. And I think if we say we need an interim, then we talk about what's, how do we want to go about. Doing it and we could, we, we may not do a cattle call, right? You, you don't know, but I think we haven't even defined it.
I just felt time is of the essence. You certainly are on the selection committee and could explain that. And also introduce yourself to the rest of the board. Same time.
So that's that.
About this. On the, it'll be on the agenda. Discuss what our process is for making this. Determination.
So that gives you at least some, this, this is the thirteenth, so you've got eighteen days to. If you, you know, if you're going to transition to, you know, to somebody else, you've got eighteen days to, to do that. You're not going to have to wait for another, I mean, if, if you're going to forego a cattle call. Then. You know, you'll have the benefit. I've got my CV here and I hit a transmitter letter out, I'll leave with Dave and.
Yeah, I think for, for me then, David, it's critical that we see that list we've talked about, just understand. Because to me, it's more about understanding what's not going to get done. Right? And understanding what that workload looks like.
And then from the bandwidth is, is more narrow than a, than a full-timer.
Chief, you have another question?
There's no question.
Yeah, do you think this is something maybe we should start the council about too? I mean, just the optics of it in general, we have. A committee, a committee member who didn't pick a. Candidate, you know, from a process and now they're going to financially benefit from it. Just seems, there's a lot of optics here that just. I mean, I'm a thirty-year resident too here and it just seems like there's a lot of optics here that just don't sit right after being here thirty years.
Mr. Chairman, if that starts. I'm out of here.
Right, yeah, two things.
I'm, I'm telling you, I'm out of here.
Yeah, I've already, first of all, you're right to be concerned about optics, Dave. And I already talked to council about it. And I, I think the point that he was already, he's been on the committee. Was one of the original. People to, to serve as the interim and also our current interim. Town Administrator is actually on that selection committee as well. So he served the whole time as well on that, in that, on that selection committee, on this, I should say screening committee, that's what they did, the screen.
Right, we were actually the one that would select it.
Chairman, when you see my CV. I invite you. To reach out to everyone. In my past. You know, in my immediate past and long-term past, okay? If you're talking about optics and my professional integrity means more to me than anything. Than working a, working a job for a few bucks. Trying to help out my town. I.
I mean, I just want to, I don't think anyone is. There are no casting of aspersions with that comment from the way I take it. I think it's more of a reality of. You know. See, we throw optics around a lot. Sort of tired of optics. I think if we are making a decision. That we think is the right decision, and I mean. No one's questioning ethics here in my mind, you know what I mean? I'm perfectly comfortable answering questions if somebody were to come up to me and say.
Me too.
Isn't that strange? I'm like, well. It may look strange, but if you understand what's behind it, not so much, if we're to go in that direction. So I kind of. I understand the, the, the perspective being offered. I would add, I don't think anyone is casting aspersions or saying, you know, I think it's just optics and perspectives and something to consider. I would say if, if. I'd say, you know, getting a town council to say, yeah, you're all good, don't worry about it, but in writing. Because we're not talking to town council, that would be a good thing, right? Just say, yeah, see, we, we've done the due diligence, there's no issues there. But the town council's been a part of this whole process in the very beginning, still is right now.
We're also here being transparent.
Yeah, correct, completely. And, and again, I want to thank you, thank you both. For all of your efforts and continued efforts. So. As far as we're gonna, we're gonna dispose of the other two. I don't think we, a need for neither of the.
So.
Thanks.
Is that it?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, yes.
Yeah, leave those, that'd be great. Thanks.
You're asking for a motion?
Yeah, I would look for a motion to adjourn. So when, when, I had mentioned a call I had this morning, I don't know if this falls under. I'm not reasonably anticipated, because I wasn't planning on giving an update, but given. Should we just wait till next week?
If it's, if it's, I think, I, I think it's.
It's more informational, I don't know, I can go either way.
Well, it says. Item's not anticipated, you had a call today, it's new today.
Right.
And we're not taking any action on it, then you certainly can.
No, it's just more of an update.
Yeah, sure.
What we learned, so I had a call with the Collin Center. A different area. You've heard me say organizational design, things like that, so Jen joined me on a call. Understand what if any support they could lend the board in terms of looking at our organization and saying, hey. Two things, one. Don't do a study, but possibly more of facilitation with the board, possibly key stakeholders, talk about. What's going on out in the municipal ecosphere that we're not aware of? In terms of structure and the reason I bring it up is I think the idea of a. You know, the conservation agent and then the land planner, we use the term sustainability. These were things we talked about, saying there's a lot of things that may or may not be getting done in town. That. Got a few of us thinking, we should kind of have somebody give us more information of how other towns are doing it. And, you know, take into account the highway study, the DLS study, the more holistic view, so. Then the end result is that is Sarah's taken that away and she'll bring back a proposal for our consideration. But it's not a study, it's probably.
Sarah is at the Collin Center.
At the Collin Center.
She's going to work with some of her colleagues at Collin Center too that have done something similar in the past, so they would. Feel to bring back to us what they've done in the past and then. For the town to take a look at, Emily might say, not a survey, it's not a, not a study, but more of a, a survey, an informational survey.
They might do an internal slot analysis across the operations, but then more. Work with our board and stakeholders to talk about. You know, what future state might look like. If it might be exactly what we have today. But there might be some opportunity to kind of look at the studies we've had done. Some of the information that we're learning about, about things that we could be doing that we're not doing, but then. Look at our resource and our staffing in a way, job description to say, this might be an awful way to look at structuring the town operations.
They're going to create a hypothesis based on existing information.
They're going to facilitate a discussion amongst ourselves to get us thinking and talking and offer information we're not aware of.
And talk about, you know, with the department. But through, through a. Specific interview questions.
Yeah. But from that, we could come away with some, some FY25 goal-setting opportunities, things like that, so. It just struck me based on the conservation update and. No action, just at some point. Either Jen and I will get this proposal saying this is what we think would be helpful to you. And we get to decide.
Nuggets regarding how we can focus ourselves more.
Yeah, if we had, if you've gotten a response yet and I said no, and she said he would fall off because I think he's in Malaysia right now. But she figures an action I need to get back to you on the grant.
That's another option in the organization.
Yeah.
He was brought up that only in detail.
All right, well, I move to adjourn.
Second.
A favor.
Hi.
Hi, have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.